We're gonna go ahead and call to order. Okay, unless you wanna talk, then you have to. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can everyone please rise for the flag? We remain standing for a moment of silence for our deployed troops and our EMS and first responders, please. Thank you. First up on the agenda, first of all, I would like to remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded, so you're giving consent to be recorded if you wanna speak during the meeting. If you don't wanna be recorded, then we would have to set something up different than what we're doing tonight. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the opening of a portion of Summit Alley. Does anybody, is anybody here who wishes to speak about Summit Alley? Then I would entertain a motion to open. Oh, yeah, that's true, it's in fact, okay. So, comments are closed on Summit Alley?
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead.
Can I make up, I believe I have the right one. Mine wasn't in order, but Summit Alley, the second or third warehouse. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's later on, they're gonna do the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're just, that was just the hearing to see if anyone had any objections.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Nope, not a problem. Yeah, so did I, that's why I was continuing. Okay, we are going to have a short, hopefully short, executive session for personnel and contract issues, so smoke 'em if you got 'em.
For now, I'm gonna call you back from some executive meeting room, okay?
Okay, Andrew.
And you probably real leather and all that, you know?
There was no imitation. You better believe it. How, how Traver made any money out of that point, sense of heal, fifty cents per soul is beyond my line of estimation.
I know, I took many of pair of shoes down there.
You better believe it.
For, for me and my brother and my father, he'd buff them up and he'd put new soles, heel on them.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I bought this, I bought this pair of shoes at Walmart, right? Work shoes, had steel toes, and I'd be late, I only paid like fifteen dollars for them, right? Because they were discontinued when it was my size, I figured what's happening? So, when the soles wore out, I took them over to Dallas Towns and the lady said, yeah, she said, that's, that's a pair, it costs about eighty-five dollars to have three soles on. And I said, well, I only paid fifteen for them, so I don't think I'm gonna worry about it. But, but she said it's that way that shoes are made, that wear out, throw them away, you know what I mean? And, and even, even the, like, when I, when I worked, I used to buy my work shoes or Red Wings, right? Well, they're the same way. Every year, you would get a, you know, ten, or we give you seventy-five dollar allowance, which covered about half of them, right? Well, but at the end of the year, they were about ready to be, you know, shot anyhow. You might get, I'm, I'm not too hard on your parents, but you can get a year and a half, I don't know, you know what I mean? Right, right. But, I, I used to work with a guy down in, down in Crown, in the shoe shop, and he'd always buy these cheap shoes, he'd always be complaining about his feet, knees hurting, you know? And I told him, I said, "Go buy yourself a good pair of shoes," you know, "Get a pair of Red Wings," or, you know? He, you know, he'd complain about them. I asked Kim about that, where Summit Alley is. It's up there behind, was it Third Street? You know, up there where Doc makes, used to be, you make up right there at the barn, at Summit Alley. Then the one behind that with Bounder Avenue, up there where Leonard used to live. Well, it's another one, tongue to have a day away, you know? They were, they were gonna close it because there was tree roots growing, if they didn't know that, well, they should've took care of that a little bit, they should've come out there and just told the people that they were gonna have to cut these roots out, if a tree dies, well, you know, but... And, and it's just like, it's just like our house. They wouldn't have to put a new alley down if they would've took care of you. But she, you know, she was on her high horse all the time, and, well, wouldn't let them do anything to it, so... So they had to spend all that money for a new alley.
Well, I love when she said about when Mary, Will and I find this, the alley, whatever, her and the solicitor checked it out thoroughly, and it is not done. When it's called right now, it runs in my deed.
Yeah, the same way with my deed, it says, "I'm supposed to give seven and a half feet for public action." And then the neighbor's supposed to give seven and a half for public action. And years ago, fifteen feet was wise enough. And see, that's another, that's another thing where they got, they get money from the state from the fuel highway fund, and the state says they have to be twenty-one feet. Well, I'm sure they were twenty-one for, you know, years ago, you know what I mean? And they just changed it.
Yeah, she was right, it was the alley between us and themselves. Well, I thought Will was joking, Will always used to say, "You live on the corner of Penn and Constitution, right?" And that, that's what that was, Penn. Just the insulator cutting off something that came through.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, you know, they wanted to make that through just not too long ago. Somebody was wanting it, let it happen, you know what I mean? That's what it should've been, Penn, Penn Street should've went from down there in that section eight housing, could've come right up there, and they would've had two ways in and out of there, you know what I mean?
Well, Will and him, with the situation that they're in.
Tony, what brings you out to this? You wanna go into garbage?
No. I wonder how these new orders are gonna get to take garbage can from, on somebody's truck, car parked in front of it.
That's what I, that's what I'd say, 'cause like, down on Franklin?
Well, that's all good for roll, so, my, my house in Delaware, we all have Wall Street parking lots. And we have those, but how you gonna do that in a town that has everybody parking streets?
Constitution, Franklin, Drudge Street. Now Maine, in due time, they made that old new parking lot.
And what do you do to that?
Yeah, yeah, you know, we got one trash can now, twelve, right? Yeah, you sign it, but they have their back at the executive.
Right, right, that is, I tell them all kinds of things. Yeah, the other thing is, they said, they wanna make it, with no, no fault, less, you know, without, without a bar, those are less of, for markets, whatever, like, oh, here's what'll happen. From New York, working in New York City for a hundred years, what happens is, the guy was gonna put his mattress out on Friday, to be taken that day, he's not gonna throw it in the backyard, and he's gonna sit there once.
That's why I said, I, I told, I told, you know, I said, "I think you free, some of the trash here out, if it fits."
Yeah, because people are gonna throw their faulty shit in their backyard.
Yeah, yeah.
Believe me, I spent twenty-five years off in New York City shit holes.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and they were, they most definitely, because they're lazy.
Yeah, like, how, how does a wolf, people like that, get a ninety-six gallon trash can, or house in the street?
True.
I mean, she doesn't do it now, we do it, we do all that, you know?
Goes to one day with, and it costs you one day?
And every year, it goes up. We've been here every month.
But the thing is, people, this isn't one of the biggest and worst, this is only on the agenda. Hopefully people saw.
You, you gotta let them tell them what, how your trash can be picked up January first.
I never got a letter.
You didn't get it?
Nope.
We got one, we got a saying from the Penn Way saying, "When you send your trash out there, it's gotta be sent to Penn Way."
Three feet from each?
Three feet from the recycle bin.
Three feet from mailbox, three feet from, also called three feet. Cars, you really got these three feet?
Well, Kim was saying that the only problem here is they're gonna send somebody alone from the truck, and they'll just, they'll put the old ones, well...
Then, then what do they, that's why they change.
And defeats the purpose.
You're, you're, if you're sending a guy anyway.
Yeah, and it's, it's got its benefits.
And, and I just, but you can't do that in certain areas.
Right, and...
And of course, then, then of course you only need to have a bag though.
Right, yeah, you can't have bag though.
Well, somebody, like I said, said you can have a bag, but of course you can't.
Right, right.
And, and already the trash is going, you know, you're going, theoretically, you can put twelve cans, we got sixteen tops, okay? And now we're going down to one of our stores.
Now, I will say these, I use, I use a ninety-six pack, okay, I'll say, the one that is hooked onto the back, you can get full of five, six bags in there, regular thirteen gallon ones, not a leak bag.
Yeah. But there's, there's times when in the spring, and the fall, when I'm cleaning up the yard and everything, you know, that, that I might have six cans out there, full of, you know, broomful of flowers, just, you know, all kinds of stuff, I guess. I don't know. But see, the whole problem is, there's no competition. It's either Penn Way or...
I don't even care who it is, it's not that one, it's just the fact that you're the only one that's tall, you're gonna do one day.
Yeah.
I know a lot of things to do on it, but my biggest thing is, this, this frickin' arm thing, you know? And how, even if you do have space between two cars, how many arms do you have in a truck this morning? A reed, from about the middle of the road, a hole in it, 'cause I see how they walk down in Delaware, they pull right up to the edge of your yard, and the arm comes right to the garbage can, which is below the road.
Yeah. Well, see, like I said, on Franklin Street, the piece where, where I always park right here on Franklin, because I have no work, when I park right there, it's a spot right below me in the mailbox. And people used to park there. Now, it's okay if you're gonna park there and go to work, it's seven o'clock, or six o'clock, or morning, or whatever, and people can get their mail, but they had a sign on the mailbox.
See, when I was down in the mailbox, rather than the evenings, if people were home, you'd be walking there.
What is it?
You don't get, the mailbox is blocked, you don't get your mail.
Yeah, they had a sign there that said, "Don't park in front of the mailbox," you know? So what are they gonna do, put the, they gotta put the garbage thing three feet from the mailbox? I don't know. And they don't, and it all costs you more.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Well, like you said, not only costs you more, it's gonna cost you more for a year, five years.
Oh, yeah, 'cause you know it next year it's gonna be more.
Yeah, it's gonna look every year in the contract.
Yeah. I can't believe that there isn't somebody. I keep my trash trucks instead of being huge trees. We have a clean street that you can, in your county.
Well, they said, "I can't, I can't, I can't, often he'll leave after a break."
It don't move people, it don't move people worth going into the trash, you know? I mean, I know a trash truck probably costs a million dollars now, you know what I mean? But you can buy it usually. Yeah, yeah, that's the biggest place, you have to pay so much to, but, you know? Wasteman?
Nah, it's nothing.
You don't hear much of it in, in your county, maybe they figure, you know, they're more trying to underbid Penn Ways. But Scott Wagner don't even do it anymore anymore. And, you know, he was a cut, and he was a cut, yeah. Yeah, I first met him, Scott Wagner, when he was running for, what, the House, or Senate, or wherever, and he was up there, it was in the basement of Kenzie Dawson office at Water Street. Yeah, he said, he said, he said, "Where do you live?" I said, "New Freedom," he said, "Sign my petition, I wanna run for, you know?" I said, "Okay."
Yeah, it's gonna be accommodating.
Did, did, did they sell them? Or did they sell them? Somebody, I heard somebody saying it, they didn't own them. What's that? Oh, okay, what New York County area county council wanna do? That would've been, that would've been west there. Yeah, yeah. I can remember going to those meetings sometimes. I forget the old guy's name. He was like, like the oldest guy, I can't remember his name. I know you probably know what I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, see, when I first got in, it wasn't that great, but Mr. Goodto, became scout master, and he straightened it out. And, yeah, we had a good group of fathers that went along with us. Like Mr. Erwager, Mr. Porche, you know? Ah, okay. I can remember, I can remember going up to Bill Porche's house on Mondays and Wednesdays, walking all winter long, to learn the Morse code. 'Cause you had to have Morse code for first class.
Against whatever principles or whatever, familial or familial conflict.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you know what that's all about?
Yeah, yeah.
A friend of mine, when I was calling over to wife, told me several years ago, two, three years ago, when they set up our dad in the service, or someone told me, she was, she was, you know what I'm saying? And they interviewed him, and he asked him about, and they beat him up, she said, "You know, there are a lot of male on the lot, and it's been a century, and deep in time."
Yeah, yeah.
And we all, one of the other guys I knew said he heard, he said, "He didn't hear the ones he's in on, or when he was shooting."
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if I can remember if I locked her. Yeah.
They're gonna go, because they're saying they're supposed to be in a team, that general one of those.
Yeah, yeah.
They're going for, for nine general bus certificates.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think seven late states already.
Yeah, New York, New York State already, yeah. Yeah. These, these, these little kids growing up are gonna be so confused, they won't know what's... And that's what it's all about, is to destroy the whole family. Yeah, he can't even read the word diploma, right? Yeah. Well, they already did away with a curse of writing, you know? But see, everything now is... Yeah. Yeah, crime, violence, and all that other stuff, right? Well, she, she, Colorado, probably found that out. Right. They've had that thing a lot, in Colorado, a lot here, and they're lining it out, like you said, it ain't a better route. Well, you go up, you get all the prospects written up there. And that medical marijuana place across the street there used to be the bank. You know, right there at the corner. It's, it's always, it's always free. I don't know. I mean, yeah, it may, it may help some people, but I think there are a lot more people going to Ted. Right. Yeah, they want to be socialists, and the people in China want to be free. Well, the only good thing is if you, if you would impeach with lies and errors, then you'd have a Republican now in charge. But then that would be a party, and I don't know about him much either. He's bad McConnell, I believe. Yeah. Well, Pelosi will be going, it's China. No, she's going from the House, she's going down. She, they, they also going over the House. So Pelosi's going, and Kevin McCarthy is going to be the Speaker of the House. But I don't know about him either. I think he's an opportunist. I think anytime it looks in his favor, he's a career politician, you know?
We're going to wait for you, one second, and you can get Bernal back. Okay, thanks. Okay, um, we're going to call back to order, and I did want to mention that Bernal is on speaker button, so, so he's also here. The next thing is public comment, and Anne.
Good evening, Borough Council. I'm here today to talk about an ongoing health emergency, which has been occurring in and around the Juanita Street row homes since at least late spring of this year, which has significantly impacted the daily lives of tenants, investors, and homeowners like myself, who have invested in our 122-year-old homes in downtown, downtown New Freedom. Once affectionately known as Millionaire Row, which are two sets of brick row homes, is now in danger of becoming known as Cockroach Row. Why? Because for no fewer than seven months, this community has been battling a neighbor's roach infestation, which has cost us collectively thousands of dollars, even to try to remedy it in vain. I say in vain, because here we are in December, and despite our best and collective efforts, which includes a recent absolute abomination of a court case before Judge Sweeney last month, I sit before you tonight respectfully imploring you to help my community fix this problem once and for all. This jar of roaches, collected over just the last 10 days from my home, shouldn't be here tonight. This issue should have been solved already. I shouldn't have to be here tonight speaking to you about this, and you should not have to be here hearing this. Nor should I and others have to beg our pest control companies to come to the rescue between scheduled treatments because we cannot bear another night with roaches crawling across our bodies because we lay in bed or on the couch, have roaches greet us in our showers morning and night, have them floating up in our morning cups of coffee and dog's water bowls, and even scurrying across our dinner plates, as happened to my boyfriend, who you will hear from in a few minutes, just last week. One former neighbor who moved out recently even found roaches in her tube of toothpaste after she moved out, and after she brushed her teeth with it. Right here.
Do you want me to...
Yes. We take pride in our homes and have worked hard to not only help the neighbor with the infestation, who is not even helping herself to any degree of actual efficacy, but we came together to solve this problem as a community. The problem is, however, is that the tenants of the infested home did not actively participate in our group effort to solve our community problem, which they caused, while we all did and are still doing our parts. And as such, we still have a problem. The results of that are obvious. This is from the neighbor on the other side of them, over a two-week period after the house was vacated. Again, this is mine, over the last 10 days, just 10 days. The results of this are obvious, and they affect our daily lives and even the most mundane of tasks, as going to the utensil drawer to get a fork and finding roaches, leaving a plate in the kitchen sink for an hour, or enjoying a bowl of popcorn during a movie without monitoring the bowl, or in my case, even having my friends and even adult children over to my home for dinner is an impossibility, or carving my Halloween pumpkin because I couldn't, because that's roach food, food after all, and the roaches had been on porches in our backyards all summer and fall. And for your information, this neighbor still has their pumpkin from Halloween on their porch. And you can forget about my putting wrapped Christmas presents under my tree this year, I cannot, I just can't. I can't even do these simple things, like make Christmas cookies in this terrible situation. Council, I am frankly exhausted. My community is fed up, and this has been complicated by dashed hopes of having this solved by the excruciatingly long 60 days per borough ordinance for the infested neighbor to remedy her family's roach problem. In August, the first of several written complaints from May to the borough about this. But not just the infestation, but open garbage, which has been sitting outside the tenant's backyard, back door, and sometimes front door, and the cockroaches would move, you could see how they would travel, there would be more in the front when the garbage was there, more in the back when the garbage was in the back. And we made sure to let the borough know that the problems were still occurring when the 60 days were up that we thought we had to wait for. We were still dealing with the infestation and garbage situation next door, and it is still here today, like tonight. Before I came tonight, I looked outside exactly the same as this photo taken a couple days ago. The buildup to the court case had us feeling that something would happen to finally end this. We were hopeful, but due to a difference in opinion as to what the ordinance means with regard to landlord responsibilities, and you, you know, you know your ordinance is better than I do, we walked away even more hopeless than we were when we arrived. And we left without a landlord to be compelled to fix this and to fix it now, perhaps with a thousand dollar per day, you know, per day fine, could have been motivating. Instead, we have been doomed to a slow walk through the infested home's finally monthly treatments, which started only after the 60 days and the court case, while we continue to deal with the fallout from their problem. And here we are at almost Christmas, and we are still talking about these roaches, and for many of us, living in a hell on Cockroach Row. We need your help, Council members. We need this to end once and for all. I and others are so grateful to the Borough Manager and Mayor Butcher for taking an interest in our roach infestation. Andrew Schaefer has done his best, in my personal opinion, and has updated us on steps moving forward, and I do not blame him. And Mayor Butcher has taken a special interest in our community. He stopped by our neighborhood a couple of weeks ago to see for himself what we were dealing with. A neighbor brought him to my house when he saw him outside, and I invited him to come in and talk, even though his visit was unexpected. I am grateful for his interest. Even if this has not yet been solved, I am grateful for the serious attention paid to us by Mr. Schaefer and Mayor Butcher, and now we need your help. But what I'd like for you to know is that this infested home has been a problem long before Mr. Schaefer or Mayor Butcher were even part of this borough, as far as I know. For over a decade, this properties have lasting and very obvious code violations, which have included years, decades of garbage and hoarding of all types of junk, or if you're a hoarder, subjectively treasures, for, just all types of junk back there. So it is no surprise to many of us that we would end up with these types of consequences, even with a newish tenant there, due to over a decade of bad behavior and a landlord who seems disinterested in the community, one that she left behind and seems to care not about at all, nor the living conditions and bad habits of her tenant, year over year over year. In my opinion, unchecked living conditions and the condition of the unit of which I speak has been ripe for this type of roach issue for over a decade, and the landlord has skirted consequences for it, which may have compelled her, had she had them, to fix this and fix this fast, had she known there could be hard and vast consequences. And while my frustration is with her and the tenant, if anyone or anything needs to be punished, I invite you, Council, to join us, my community, in punishing the roaches immediately. I cannot do this anymore, I am done. What I am asking the Council and the borough to do is to help us slam dunk this roach problem once and for all. We are in winter, and this is still a problem. While German cockroaches, which is what this infestation is, don't go dormant during the winter, their activity naturally slows a tad during, during winter. So please do not be fooled by a slowdown of roaches during this time, for we have learned that if there is one, and there are many, there are many more. What you need to know is that in their short 100 to 140-day life cycle, is that one female roach, and there is a live one crawling around in this jar, produces four pods of, of babies, which produces about 200 roaches each, each life cycle. This is just one female roach, and just like a pyramid scheme, those 200 roaches also mate incessantly and keep the colonies going. These roaches are extremely promiscuous, mating all of the time and spreading out everywhere, and I and others have been living this hell for many, many long months. Council, I am respectfully asking, even if unprecedented, that you help this community solve this health crisis, and it is one, and before it spreads out to homes in front of and behind us, like the Franklin Square apartment complex, or the Section 8 housing nearby. The roaches have already crossed from one side of Juanita row homes to the other, and also a standalone home away from our brick buildings. I really am fearing spring, and you should too, when these roaches will get more active. I don't want to be talking about this in, in the spring, and I really just want my life back. What I am asking the borough to do is to please pay for our homes to be fumigated as soon as possible. I'm not talking about the regular pest control service that many of our homes have been undergoing for many, many months. I'm talking about, as a pest control supervisor told me a couple of weeks ago, a once and for all annihilation of the roaches, and I suggest that both sides of the Juanita Street row homes get fumigated so that we can stop playing cockroach ping pong, ping pong, as we have been doing. We are tired of paying for this in all senses of the word, and the financial cost has been significant. Besides paying for every type of home remedy you can think of, countless traps in roach motels, poisons, foggers, roach balm sprays, highly toxic commercial roach remedies, and products that I have purchased, that has made me cough, sneeze, and vomit, all the way up to the regular scheduled pest control service that we receive. The emotional and physical costs have also been immense. I cannot live this way anymore. I have done everything I possibly can do to keep my house in order, but when one lives right next door to the epicenter of the problem, it is a losing battle, as my pest control company has told me on a few occasions. Please help us end this hell once and for all, and when you do, please engage in aggressive code enforcement of the infested property. Thank you.
She's going to go next, and he's, can he go next?
Hi, Josephine. Long time, no see. My name is Josephine Calista, and I'm an investor. I own two properties on Juanita, and my son owns one also. So it's three properties that my family owns on that street. I have one on each side of the street, and my son also has one on the opposite side from where Anne lives. This is from my property. This was over a week after Orkin treated it, and I don't think she passed it around, but you can see what we're dealing with. Which address was this in? 119. I own 119, 114, and my son owns, what does he own?
12.
112. So it's three houses. And as an investor, I own seven units, and I've never, ever encountered anything like this. If a tenant calls me and says there's a problem with anything, it gets immediately taken care of. We have spent money, my son had to have it treated on the other side of the street because he had it treated because his tenant saw roaches. So my son, Tommy, had to have it treated. My tenant moved out, his mother said, for his mental health. He had to move out. I believe with that Shannon's toothpaste?
Yes.
It's the tenant that lived there, his girlfriend, that was her toothpaste. I cannot rent this place. I cannot do anything. So this is basically going to sit there until something is resolved. I've got pictures that my husband took yesterday. He went there, I think it was three days ago, and treated the place. He's going through chemo, he should not be there. He went there and used a whole gallon of bug killer, industrial stuff, sprayed the whole thing down the second floor and the first floor, and then he went there and took pictures today. So that was, and I've got pictures of them lined up by the front door, dead, all over the floor, all over the stove, everywhere. This is after Orkin treated. And I know from owning other properties, I have a place that's down in Hampton area of Baltimore City that I've owned for years. that I've owned for years. I don't have a cockroach problem there, but I know that it goes from place to place to place to place. And if nothing's done, it's gonna continue to get worse. There, I treat it once a month. And if any, as I said, if anything happens, I treat it. This landlord has no desire, nothing, to treat anything. We offered to buy it from her, and she turned us down. I said, just let, let me buy it. I'll take care of the problem. And she said, no. My son offered the same thing. She said, no. I mean, if you want to see the pictures, they're on, my husband sent them to me today. But as I said, he shouldn't be having to go through this. I know we have to take care of our property, but he came, got out of bed to come here today, and he got out of bed to go there and treat it. So it's, it's not right. Ann has told me that she wakes up and there's cockroaches in her bed. That's a horrible way to be. The yard is disgusting. We are on the other side of it. We are right there. So from the deck of my property, you're looking at complete total trash. They have children. The children can't play in that yard. They go down to where the low-income housing is and plays on, on, on that playground because they can't play in their own yard. The house next to us, we have a driveway, we're on the end of the group. That house there now has cockroaches. It's going to spread all over the place. And hopefully it doesn't spread to the new townhomes behind it because that's a lot of money they'd have to be spending. And I'm sure they wouldn't be happy either if this one house with this one infestation continues to be allowed to, it's a health problem. It's actually even a children and youth service problem because, you know, it's children and youth could be involved with this because of the fact that children are living there in this unhealthy standard, which is very sad. Nobody wants to do that to children, have anybody come in there. But whatever has to happen, has to happen because the children's health, their mental health is at risk. If you want to see the pictures I have of today, I'll gladly pass my phone around, but I think you get the gist of it from Ann's pictures and from our roach trap over there. And as I said, I have never seen anything like this. I've, I worked for the government Veterans Affairs, and I've spoken to social workers who go into people's homes. And I showed them pictures, and they said they have never, ever seen anything like that. Never. It's a complete infestation, and unless something's done, it's going to continue. And I feel sorry for the other people. And there's another person here who lives on the street, who have to live there and deal with this. Because guess what? They're not gonna be able to sell their property with that. I can't get tenants. If it spreads even further, New Freeham's gonna get this reputation of cockroach town. And it's not a good reputation to have. But that's it. I hope that the borough can, can help us to do something. And like she said, that they are, they have a wisteria. They don't care about anything. They have a wisteria thing that has actually grown into the side, into the siding, into the brick, into, under the shingles. And I know Ann wanted to try and trim it. The man told her, no. After the court hearing, lo and behold, the woman that owns it, because it wasn't the man's. Everybody thought the man owned it. No, it's in the wife's name only. She said, oh, whatever you would like to do. You know, whatever we would like to do, to, to do it as far as that's concerned. But the cockroach problem is the main problem. I thank you very much for your time, and hopefully something came to be done. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
My name's David Moister. I live at 115 The Fan. Prior to moving to Pennsylvania, I lived in Arkansas. I got here shortly before all of the remodeling was done on Ann's house. Sixty thousand dollars worth of renovations. Sixty thousand dollars for a wisteria that's gonna climb up underneath the deck, get into lattice work, go into plumbing, wrap around plumbing, and pretty much just destroy it. It's considered invasive species in Pennsylvania. The backyard, I challenge everyone of you guys, come on over to the backyard. You can come into my house, look out the back door, and you can see it perfectly. There hasn't been one finger out there to pick that stuff up and bring it up to the road to get it thrown away. Come on over, seriously. Find no mistake, does, does the code enforcement, do they adjourn? They don't? Okay. Come on over to my house. Y'all can come into my kitchen, look out over the back fence, and you can see exactly what we're talking about. It's not getting better at all. They won't do anything to get it better. And I think I showed you guys pictures of the front with the air conditioner units and the pumpkin that's still out there from Halloween. When are y'all gonna do something about it? We took the wrong person to court last time. When are we gonna actually go over there and enforce the regulations? Thank you.
I have a question. He had called to speak, and he lives there also. It means he'll be able to speak if he would like to.
Absolutely.
Do you want to turn?
Hello, council. My name is Chad Hawk, Olivage, 111 Leed Street. I am fortunate enough to be several houses down from this. I don't have to deal with the situation that Ms. Ann deals with, living at 117 or what, whether neighbors do at 119. Ann mentioned cockroaches in my coffee. We went to court, I guess, on Tuesday. Wednesday morning, I'm drinking my coffee before work. I, there's a picture somewhere. You don't even see pictures. You've seen enough of this, this stuff here. My dog picks up his dog toys, and there's cockroaches in his dog toys. I just had a nice dinner with my fiance Saturday night. We came home Sunday, having lunch, and there's cockroaches crawling across my couch. There's cockroaches crawling on my ceiling. I'm aware, I moved in in March thirteenth of twenty twenty. It's really, it's a rough neighborhood if you're, anybody's familiar with Leed Street. It's considered the ghetto of New Freeham. But there are several people in this neighborhood now who take care of their properties. The property that I bought used to have seven-foot-tall weeds in a backyard. I now have a beautiful home that I live in, take care of my yard really well. And there's several else that take pride in what we have. It isn't a lot, but it's where we live. And unfortunately, we're dealing with a terrible situation, and I don't know what it's going to take. I don't know where to come from help. I don't know if it's, it was mentioned in court that the property could be condemned. But we can fumigate, treat, we can all spend our, hard our money to fight the situation. But if these people don't leave, we're, what's, this is gonna continue to happen over and over and over again. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a situation. So I don't know where we can go with this. But I, as well, with everybody else, plead for your help to help us do something. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Somebody mentioned the nuclear option to fumigate everything at one time. Do we have a cost on that?
I do, and I think I left it in the car. But do you want me to just tell you what it was?
Sure.
Do you want, so I, Orkin, we tried to get from two companies, and, and I use Orkin. A lot of us actually use Orkin. And I asked, supervisor came out the other day, and I asked him, I said, what can we do that's more than what we're doing? And he said, fumigation. I said, do you guys do fumigation? And he said, they subcontract fumigation, but it runs through them. And he gave me a mock contract to bring to you, because I asked him, which I left in my car, I can give it to you. And it's about four hundred dollars a house. However, there's a discount for the houses. There are six row homes on one side. We are the most affected. There's four on the other. I recommend all ten. And that's because they're already showing signs of what we've been living. And so it's like roughly four thousand something, including six percent tax, but that does not include whatever discount that you would have to work out with them. We tried to get it from ATC, but they don't do that, but Orkin will. And if you'd like, I can go get the paperwork, and you can proceed with your meeting. That's it? Can I have my cockroach back? I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep collecting them until this is done, to start filling this up.
Even if all of them are fumigated and then people are still there, it's just gonna happen again.
Well, I, I, it is a two-step.
People need to be evicted, and they're, yeah.
I mean, it is a two-step process. We have to get it cleaned up before we fumigate, or else it's just gonna, you're right, it'll, it'll just be back. I'm not unfamiliar with the situation. I had four apartments in Mount Rose that ended up with a roach problem, and it's, it's not easy. And it really isn't. And we ended up fumigating those, and they finally got rid of all of them. So I do have confidence in the fumigation route, once you get it cleaned up.
I, when I was on mine now, I was, I was full of cockroaches, full. The health department should work with the people because your canned goods, everything has to be emptied. It's a long, long tedious thing. Both rows, the houses, they're in the wall, they're in the flooring and everything. It took one month, and I have two babies, to clean up the mess. We had some manders in the house, and, you know, they ate some of the roaches. But it's a long, long, darn long process. Does the health department not help at all with the fumigation? Advising them, or have you, have you contacted the health department? Because, I mean, my children got very sick from the roaches. So they, they do carry diseases, is why I'm saying that maybe the health department, they should work together. But Andy, you know, it's a long, long process. And, and the work that goes into it, you know, they probably need help cleaning out the cupboards and everything else like that. It's, it's not just spraying Orkin. I have Orkin for Ann's now. It's, it's not, it's not that easy.
Can I comment on that? I cannot tell you how many times, like, I've moved in. Like, I keep pulling everything out of my cabinets. I keep cleaning. I keep going through everything. You're absolutely right. We're doing everything right. Like, we're, because we know that. They hide. I've been through my bookcases. I've been through my boxes. I mean, I just can't settle because I'm constantly, I'll tell you, my, this is my life.
Yeah, it's terrible.
But when the epicenter of the problem is not actively doing that, it doesn't matter what you do. It, it'll go down for a little bit, and they come right back two weeks later. And then you start over again, and it's hell. I just have to use that word.
It's terrible.
It's awful. It really is awful.
It's a terrible way to live, yes.
I, I just want to say, one nineteen that we own is on the Ann unit, it's empty. The person who moved out, his parents, paid for somebody coming in and taking everything to the dump. So it's empty, and you can see the other yard. And if you want to go in, you're more than welcome to go in there and see what is in there, or shake off your clothes after you leave there. But, but it's completely empty, and you can see the other yard over there. And, and you are right, it is a health, it is a health hazard. It's a health hazard, and this is not gonna get, for them to be across the street, for them to be in an individual house, if any of you are familiar with Waneta, there's an old farmhouse right there, and it's in that home. Next thing, it's gonna go into Section Eight.
Right, because that's in between us and the Section Eight. It's just a matter of time, and we're not exaggerating, like, we've lived it.
When was this first reported to the borough?
From what, do you want me to answer?
Well, Andrew.
Thank you, Molly.
I believe it was July.
July.
One other, one other thing. This landlord who's refusing to take care of it, just for hahas, if any of you drive Toys Kadores, on the left-hand side, there's a home that has a big sign saying, if you're not paying my bills, stay out of my business. Because they were taken to court in, in that town too, Glenville.
For trash. And it's ongoing.
Andy Brunz is roofing company out of that house.
So Andrew says July, August, first reported, sixty days, September, October. What happened in October?
We received additional complaints, and then we had to file with the magistrate in wait for the hearing, which occurred in November. We had to receive an additional complaint after the sixty-day period to be able to file with the magistrate that the violation was still present because the office was not able, obviously, to witness the violation. So at that point, then, we filed at the magistrate's office and waited for the hearing to be scheduled.
Obviously, the sixty-day wait is a detriment to the citizens. What emergency situations are within our ordinances, Dave, that we can?
Unfortunately, due process doesn't really care about emergencies.
It doesn't?
It does not.
An emergency health situation?
If you want to take it to emergency health situations, there's no. The legal process, to the legal process, at a court, you have to follow your ordinances. And I'm not aware of any emergency exceptions to those requirements.
Are there children in 117?
Yes. How many of these homes have children?
Just, yeah.
Just them.
And it's.
On that side, just them.
And it's the home that's caused the situation?
Yes.
How long have they lived there?
They've lived there since July of twenty twenty-one. And my, so I've owned my property for six years. My mother rented from me for five of those years. Nothing, nothing, nothing. And it wasn't until late spring, before I even moved in, that the tenants of 119 told me they started seeing something. And they attributed it to them. And then all of a sudden, they were on the porches, on the ceiling of the porches, in the backyards. And then it goes from there.
119 saw them when?
In late spring, like May or Ju, like, I want to say late May.
So started in May, reported to us in August.
But I didn't, I didn't see them until June or July. And I started seeing them on the porches in the backyard first, and then my house. And then what I did is I started knocking on the doors of neighbors because I'm like, I think we have a problem. And they were having a problem, but nobody likes to admit it.
Sure.
You know, so once I kind of broke the ice, we're like, oh my God, there's a major problem. And I was like, I don't know where these, you know. But I witnessed, because I'm right next door, I have video of them crawling on their back doors, like their back door. Our back doors are about this far apart. Literally crawling up their back doors, up this, in their barbers, up the brick of their house, like, on the summer days. I mean, it's just disgusting. So I've witnessed it personally. I was not the first to make an assumption that, that it was them. I never did. It was others that said, I think it's coming from them. And then through my own observation, then I saw that it was. Plus, this is not a court of law, so I can tell you what I've been told. The homeowner herself told me that when she moved there, they had cockroaches. That's not what she said later, but that's what she told me. And because I'm like, let's just help, let's just work together. Let's just get this done. And it, it was just, it just didn't work.
Who lived there before the current residents that moved in in July twenty-one?
I don't know who they were because I didn't live there.
Wasn't the owner of the property didn't live there?
No, she lived there prior to that.
So how, how long has it been a rental?
I don't know. She, she got, she was previously married, and that's when she got the house in. And apparently, people were coming here and putting the, the husband's name and saying he was the owner to the borough, and he was ignoring it because he is not the owner. And it was my son who actually did the research and found out who the real owner was. That's when people started coming to the borough and actually making the complaints about the right person. We were complaining to the wrong person for months and didn't know it.
Is her, is her last name McCleary or Hensel?
It's McCleary Hensel, because she's married. Her pseudonym is.
The house is in her maiden name.
Which is McCleary.
McCleary. That makes more sense now.
So were you complaining to, I'm not, I don't want to see the word complaining is the word used, but were you notifying the borough that it was in the husband's name? Is that, did I get that right, or notifying somebody else?
Nobody knew who owned the house. But they had a Hensel roofing sign out on their front porch forever. We assumed Tom Hensel owned the house because they're a married couple, but it's just never, what that.
Plus, I had dealt with, I don't know if you're familiar with the wisteria issue. I had dealt with Tom directly regarding just the wisteria during the spring, even before the cockroaches. And he presented himself as the person that, you know, owned the house and was responsible. That didn't go very well. And so, you know, and we did notify him about the cockroaches and a wasp infestation that landed me at urgent care, long story. So we were complaining to the wrong people, and it wasn't until we all started talking and realizing we had a huge problem on our hands, that's when the complaints started happening to the borough. Like, we just all, it just took us a while to figure out what we were supposed to do with this situation. But we, before we went to the borough, we were already treating. We were already full-blown treating and doing everything that we could.
We're, we're going to explore every option that we can on this, including condemning the property. And if there are children there.
And if there are children there, sorry?
No, go ahead.
If there are children there, I mean, roaches do carry salmonella. It's, you know, it is, I agree, it's a health hazard.
This sixty-day wait needs to be immediately addressed.
I wanted to, the next meeting, I was gonna come and ask you if you, there's some modifications that I think would be very useful to the ordinances that would help out with the situation.
Absolutely. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but, I mean, the sixty-day wait is a, it's a state thing. It's not, it's not something we can... I'm not sure what the sixty, I wasn't consulted on the sixty-day wait. I wasn't consulted on the sixty-day wait. I can work with the borough staff to determine what the exact timeframe is. But if it's in the IPMC, and we adopted the IPMC, we have to change the ordinance, that's it, property maintenance code. To amend that, to say we want it to be thirty days or less.
We're talking like seven days. I mean, you can't even give somebody thirty days.
To do that, we have to...
This isn't that I don't like, I don't like they keep parking their motorcycle on the front porch. This is a health emergency.
Y'all, y'all don't mind. Come on over and see the, see the health emergencies yourself. Look in the backyard. You wouldn't walk back there.
What I would recommend regarding the ordinance is that I think it's unreasonable to expect cockroaches to be gone in seven days. However, what is reasonable...
To steps.
Is to get, and these are highly resistant. I can tell you, I have used everything. I mean, like, everything. They are highly resistant. And so, within, I agree with, I think that's wonderful, within a seven-day period, if you could get professional service signed up, that's exactly what needs to happen, in my opinion.
And the borough doesn't need to leave it open-ended, that you have to do some, the borough needs to lay out, you need to do this, this, and this within seven days.
Yes.
You know, you need to, not, I'm not saying that they'll be gone, they're not gonna be...
They're not gonna be gone in seven days. Right, because you start the process, so, yeah.
They need to get blood out of a turnip if they don't have money. And I know what the tenant does not have money. That's why she's staying there. She's only paying enough, I believe, to cover the mortgage and the taxes for Melissa.
It doesn't take any money to carry your trash from the backyard to be taken out.
You're correct.
This is true.
You're correct. And that, I think...
But here's the thing.
Will address, am I correct? In itself, trash in the back door, we can take care of that before sixty days.
When it's, when it's not hidden from your view, which it is. It's hidden from your view.
I've been there, and I can see it from the backyard.
Andrew has, Mr. Schaefer has pictures, so it's hidden from your view. And, like, literally smashed down behind this brick wall, so...
But we do have a drone. You've talked about it and used it.
That is mine. That is not the borough's.
Yeah, but we have a drone that we've used, and we have access to.
The question was, does the code enforcement officer have a direct answer to that?
And you have to stay, you have to stay at 150 feet to, so, something that's smashed down behind a brick wall, you may not see.
You want to bet?
You can see it from a drone. You'd be able to see from over top.
You've given us permission to use...
Can I, can I say one more thing regarding ordinances? So, as I was saying when I spoke before, there was a difference in opinion during the court case. I actually agree with Mr. Schaefer's assessment during that, if you want to call it a court case. And that is, what do you do if, for instance, you have a tenant that doesn't pay a water bill? Who's responsible if they leave? The tenant, the landlord, right? So if, is that true?
That's correct.
So if that's true, then a tenant, if a tenant cannot pay for a cockroach infest, you know, to really, really take care of it, if that is true, then shouldn't the landlord be responsible? And that's really...
Well, there's a difference, because under municipal lien and tax claiming law, it's treated differently, because it's a leasable service. I tend to agree that the owner should be responsible, but the tenant is responsible to take care of the property. And since the MDJ can only find that person, then that goes to that person. Maybe that's a position she took. I don't know, I wasn't there. But I'm just saying, I can certainly understand why she may be saying that. I don't necessarily agree with it. And I, to be honest, folks, I don't think anyone's disputing you guys have a health issue, a health emergency. We have to go through the processes to change our ordinances, and do we need to do under the law, or the MDJ's just gonna throw it out again. That's my concern.
But what I'd like to do is I'd like to have our problem solved, and then do all that, because we cannot wait anymore. It just gets worse.
Andy, Andy, I don't mean to get involved in all this stuff, but I, just from what I've heard, and the only reason I'm saying this is because I worked for the Sheriff's Department for twenty-some years, and I was involved with Children's Services. Through all this stuff, has anybody did any referrals to Children's Services?
No.
I, I, I...
I mean, Children's Services, Children's Services can come in and bypass a lot of this crap.
Yes, they can.
My daughter, my daughter's...
They can pull these people out of the house within a couple days.
Yes, I really don't want that to happen.
But I understand that, but it's, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do. I just, I know Children's Services will yank them right out of the house and make them clean.
Whose responsibility would that be to report? Ours or...?
Anybody. Anybody can make a referral.
A neighbor, a neighbor can report that, the police can report that.
You can report it anonymously. You don't have to give a name.
They'll come out, you get ahold of Children's Services, make a referral, they'll come out the same day. I worked with them for twenty years.
How can we actually get access to the property, though, and say, okay, we're here to fumigate, get out?
We have to get...
Is basically what we're gonna have to do somehow.
We've gotta get it cleaned up before you fumigate.
But if they come back and live like that again, you're chasing your tail.
Right.
Yeah.
It's never ending.
The landlord had told us after the court hearing that she was gonna have to evict her. Apparently, she didn't. Because she had, the only way that it's gonna be solved, she told my husband and I that she was gonna have to evict her. And apparently, she didn't. It was just probably all garbage to pass a by.
Well, it's my understanding that she promised to have the, have orcan come out. And I think somebody checked and said she canceled it.
Yes.
Well, my understanding was that they, orcan got there, wanted the money upfront. She said she didn't have it.
That's not what happened. That is not what happened.
Can you elaborate?
She proactively sent me screenshots and told me about services that she was receiving for months, around which we scheduled our own services, and they never happened. In one case, she proactively sent me the screenshot, and I, and because it was orcan, I naive, like, didn't even realize, it didn't even occur to me that it may not be true. I called up orcan, and I said, hey, since you're gonna be here tomorrow, can you come out for me too and do an in-between service? So we're not chasing them back and forth. And they're like, oh, we're sorry, she canceled it. She sent me the screenshot and canceled it the next day, and then doubled, tripled, and quadrupled down that there was, it maintained that they were still coming. And it wasn't true. So no, that is not true, and that's not how they work. They don't show up on your door and ask for prepayment. That's not how it works.
Well, I'm gonna ask that between meetings, and you're already working with Andy and, so I think, keep in communication, and we're gonna, we're gonna approach it as aggressively as we can. Dave will help out. There is, there are processes in place, though, so I mean...
We can't, like, we can't wait anymore.
I know.
Line houses are being exterminated on a regular basis.
We can't, we just can't, and it's, it's hell. We can't wait, like, we, we did wait for the process, and it didn't work.
You've been a solicitor for a long time. You've seen this elsewhere?
Not this bad, no.
No.
You have to give them the process. I guess my thought would be, is, Andy, perhaps you could let them know where the borough is at right now with that property on the outside, because I think that's helpful. Because I think the outside has to be cleaned up before the inside can be cleaned up. Is that...
Well, the outside's, before you just come by and see anything.
I understand that, but we can't go in the backyard, so why don't you speak to where we're at there?
We're okay with that.
It's been filed?
The letters have been sent, yeah.
Okay, was that the report?
Twenty-eight, no.
Okay. Well, I think we can report that it's been sent.
Right, yeah. There have been additional code violations sent for accumulation of junk and debris at the rear of the property, pictures that were provided. Additionally, we sent violation notices concerning the wisteria out front as a noxious weed. So those two things hopefully would help the situation in the future. And letters were sent about the tenant and the landlord.
Awesome.
So that there's no mix-up of...
What is the timeframe? Now they have...
So the minimum that the property maintenance code says is twenty days, so...
But what happened to the first, sorry to interrupt you, but what happened to the first twenty days? Because other people, there were already complaints regarding that garbage, so whatever happened with those?
So the only complaints that it looked like we had were on the infestation. So we never had any pictures or anything before, where now we have documentation that was provided, so we sent the notice right away.
Did you report that there was trash outside prior?
I didn't. He did.
When did you report that?
Uh, when was that, first letter?
July or August, one of those?
So in July or August, trash.
It was written up and handed in to the counter here.
There were, there was, I'm sorry, there was a code violation letter sent back around that timeframe for junk and debris that was out by the alley. Most of that was cleaned up, and that was all we could report.
That's, she did it.
Again, that's what we did.
And you moved the rest, didn't you?
I moved the rest, but I didn't clean up the way back.
This is where I get back to...
There's nothing out by the alley, which is where there was accumulation of debris.
Yeah, there was, it's an old door back there.
It was mostly taken care of. They buried, there's actually, there's actually, FYI, there's actually garbage buried underneath there. Like, buried in the ground, just FYI, which I did not do.
I had pictures of that. Did you, did I give them to you?
You may have, but if you did, you'll see there's, we thought there was a body. It looked like one, didn't it?
Yeah, the old, the door, and there's all kinds of wood back there, and leaves about three inches deep.
Looks like pallets or something there, and you don't go underneath that.
Can I show you where, who I passed this to? So...
He'll pass it along.
So under these leaves right here, there's actually garbage buried that you can't see, because it's like literally buried in front of the ground, behind the deck.
So this goes back to, there was a trash complaint in August, and Andrew said it was mostly taken care of. So this is the type of enforcement that I've been talking about when it's mostly taken care of, and not following the ordinance, and having the whole thing taken care of. I think this might be a great example of when it's not completely followed. And council's given direction on more than one occasion to follow the ordinance process to the full extent. I've asked for pictures to be updated during the violation process, because we only ever see the first violation, and it never follows when it's mostly complete. I don't know what that means. I would like the photos updated on violations when they're closed out. I want to see what it looked like when it started, and I want to see what it looked like when it's been closed out. I don't understand why, as an elected official, that I'm, I'm being blinded from that. I want to see that. Is there a response to that? I mean, we're being blinded. How do we know?
Yeah.
And I think this is a great, this is a great example of a situation that, because this goes right in the timeline, they say when it started back in August, how that wasn't completely followed through with, I wonder what you say, lock the top of your head, mostly, from what he says, taken care of. If you would have followed the ordinance, and they would have cleaned all of their trash out, maybe these people would be living a nice life right now. I don't know. But it's a running theme of the borough, of not following the complete ordinance and, and, you know, citing four things out of eight, and we're taking care of those, and turning out unblinded to others. It's a conversation I've had a lot this year.
Can we say that we will, on their behalf, contact the Department of Health to see if they have, offer any assistance in this matter? Just, just to say, hey, can you help us? We've got a serious problem here, and what are options for you?
You know, Children's Services is probably a mess about.
Department of Health could come, just close down the doors on the place and say, vacate.
So is the borough a call?
That's what I'm asking.
Child endangerment?
It is child endangerment, isn't it? Sure it is.
Absolutely it is.
The kids are exposed to it.
Is the borough, I don't know, is that more a call?
You make the motion?
Any blind as spring can make that referral. Anybody.
It was more to the child endangerment, I would think, alone, yeah.
And everybody can make a referral.
Yeah. They all need to work together.
I'd be happy to.
That is not fair.
Wouldn't it be a welfare check, you say?
But everything that we can see is... Yes, but you're looking from above. This is from Seattle.
Excuse me, I just want, I also have to say that in Glenville, when they didn't follow through...
There's too many conversations.
In Glenville, at their property in Glenville, when they didn't follow through with all the ordinances that, you know, the violations, Glenville actually had them arrested, five different violations.
There are seven violations, I believe, on that property, and against her currently. They go to court January 29th, or December 29th.
December 30th.
December 30th, 29th.
Yeah, because they didn't follow through.
So that's for failure to pay fines, though, after finding of guilt? Is that correct?
I think they didn't address, I don't, they didn't, they didn't follow it to...
No, it's all kinds of different things.
Excuse me, whatever you guys decide to do, I, I mean, it's fine, but I think you owe it to the children, now that you know this, to make a referral.
Yeah, actually, I'm a mandated reporter, so I probably would have to do that anyway.
Now, is the borough going, are you going to report it, or are you going to just go and report it?
The mayor and I are gonna take care of it. We've taken the action to report it.
Okay, because we've been made aware.
You can make a motion for the pictures.
I've already tried that. I've, we've, I've asked, this is my third time requesting to have photos put on the code enforcement list. This is my third time.
I think we should make a motion and have council do it.
I would like a motion that we have updated photos, from the first photo that we received with the violation. And when that violation says that there's been progress, I want a picture of that progress. And when it's been completed, I want a picture of the completion. So now I'm good, but if there's a violation, I've got that. There's progress, I've got that. And when it's completed, I got that. So I'm looking at three photos through the whole process.
Okay. Could, would, I request that you modify it to not include grass cutting. Some minor violations, but, you don't need to go out and take, because grass is gonna grow by the time we have our next meeting, so I just don't want to lay out.
But there's been situations where it says it's been taken care of, but it hasn't. I want to see either the beginning, and I want to see when it's closed, because you have to go back out there to verify it, right? You can't take a picture and put it on my report?
Okay, fair enough.
Fair enough. That is my motion. Does anybody second it?
I have a motion, huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's your job. I'm too riled up, I'm sorry.
I have a motion on the table to make sure that we have pictures verifying compliance on all ordinance violations. Does anyone second?
I second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. I do, anyway. I know, it's also aye.
Thank you.
I also would like to say that if anybody wants my phone number, you can come over to my property, you're welcome on my property. I'll go with you. Or, he's usually homesick, but...
And we appreciate that, because we don't have the authority to go in their backyard. So we have the authority to go in and...
I'll give you writing, or I'll give you my cellphone, and you can contact me.
You can walk over 119.
Because, Andy, you're on the other side.
You're also welcome to my house.
You can make permission to...
Andrew, Andrew or Wade can come at any time.
Yes, anytime.
Anywhere that council can come to verify anything for this property.
And you're on the other side of her, that's the vacant house.
That's the house. Basically, we have one on the other side.
Do you have an alley there, or a driveway?
It's a driveway on the side.
Driveway on the side, yeah.
We have a driveway right on the side.
And you're more than welcome to...
You can see if this remains now.
And you're more than welcome to call in and get weekly updates, or daily updates, or whatever you feel you do need to do as this process goes through.
I think something that goes right along with this is called the quality of life that we're looking at tonight. Yeah, later. But we're looking at that, because repeated violations, because somebody gets a violation, and then they fix the violation, and then that happens, and we're just in the cycle of doing it. So we're looking at something tonight that if you get X amount of violations within X amount of time, you're gonna get fined, and it's gonna go up, and so forth. So we're actually looking at something like that tonight, because this is a situation where, sure, we might get her to fix it up, and everything's great, and in six months, you've got roaches... you've got roaches again.
If you walk in the rear of that property, on that alley, that's Highland Avenue, I've been walking by there for two and a half years and based on the pictures that you have from her backyard, her fence and the alley, it tells two different stories. You can't see that trash in the alley. I walk by it every day.
That's because it's small.
From the alley, it looks, it's not as clean as mine, but it's still clean earth. You can't see 25 trash bags in the alley.
That's actually 100% true because we drove by to see what, and you can't really tell.
It looks a whole, it looks a whole lot better, but it's still crap. It's still trash.
Yeah, I took.
I didn't know that was back there until she showed me the pictures from over top her fence. I can't see that walk by every day. So the picture that he has, that he was showing you, like, yeah, it's gone. Well, it's not really gone until you see the pictures that she just took out of that.
Can I say something?
Sure. Go ahead, right now.
I just wanted to let the people know that are having this problem with the cockroaches. I live on the corner of Newton Street and Franklin and I'm concerned like, like they are about this because I do know that over the last, I mean, a lot of years, they have a lot of problems out in that area with cockroaches from time to time. And they found out that if everybody that's in that chain there doesn't do something at the same time, that they just move from one place to the other and you just never get rid of.
Your houses are actually connected by human chases and.
We're 122 years old. Our, I think our crawl spaces are connected, I think the attics, the attics we can't get to are all connected. There's nooks and crannies, I mean, it's old, you know? We, and I love.
It's not like there's firewalls in between all your houses and even underneath. I think somebody said underneath the kitchens, there's a tunnel almost that runs the whole length of all the house.
Can you reiterate what is going to hap, what's the process going forward? What do we do, what are we going to do? Can you just reiterate so I know and they know?
Well, we've already filed. There's a 20-day waiting period that we have to do.
For the trash?
For the trash. I think that we also are going, the mayor has taken an action and I will join that action to contact the Department of Health and Children and Youth Services and that, and we'll, and we'll report it. I think Wade and Andrew need to talk with Dave and see what we can or if we can condemn the property due to the trash and the unhealthy living conditions.
So refile?
Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Dave, so.
You filed for the trash and you refiled for the infestation with the correct owner of the property. So those two filings are happening.
Well, the correct tenant.
Do we know what Tina's last name is? Did we ever find out?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we, we all know, you know, so that's all that matters.
So you're saying Tina, it's not the owner we're going.
Well, the owner is, if we're going against both, because under the IPMC, once the, once the landlord leases the property to a tenant, the tenant becomes responsible for trash and pest infestations. That's why I got thrown out because we had filed against Melissa and we should have filed against Tina. So now we are filing against both so that the owner is on notice, that there's a problem and the tenant also knows about the problem.
Okay, and then what are we doing? You said they'll talk about the code, right?
Yes.
So it's not 60 days changing that and being able to go directly to the owner instead of the tenant? We're looking at those things.
We're going to have to put some kind of words.
Sure.
To address an emergency type situation or help.
Absolutely.
You know, that's going to have to be written up and, and we'll have to vote on that and hopefully in next month.
That's something that Dave will help us with, Dave will help us with or something?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's in the property management.
Is there anything that addresses if this tenant goes and does this again and every, whatever X amount of, okay, what is there to stop that process from happening?
Well, we, first of all, just so everyone understands, the borough can't force a tenant out of there. And we, we can't, we don't have that authority. Children and Youth has that authority and that's why that's where we should go with that. Because honestly, if we can get them out of there, then we go to the, we go to the landlord and say, okay, now it's your problem because there's no tenant there to maintain this. So the MDJ really doesn't have that argument that it's the tenant's responsibility because the tenants know all of it. It's kind of the way I see it. I mean, I think that's the cleanest way to get the folks out of there, keep them safe and then move forward with a vacant property. But there is a limitation on the total maximum fine you can put on somebody. Under the criminal code, it's a thousand dollars. For summary, private criminal complaint, it's a thousand dollars for each event.
And it could be per day, according to the.
It can be, but most of the MDJs do not fine them per day. And they don't like it when we go over and file a complaint every day. So it, you get, I know they tell you to do these things, but in practice, they don't like when you do those things. So sometimes you get the exact opposite effect, but.
I don't like cockroaches.
Yeah, I think we need to work through that process, absolutely. We need to walk through all that. The, the problem is, is when you're dealing with a court and criminal actions, there's a thing called due process under the Constitution and you must go through it. You can't just say, this is an emergency, they did it too much, whatever the case may be, you've got to go through that process. So we have to look into that about what we can do. Now, if the borough is willing to spend some money, we may be able to go in and do some things to go to the Court of Common Pleas and ask them to have some sort of finding against the owner. That takes a commitment from you guys, borough council, to go that next step because that's not over here, that's up in your.
And what's that give you? Do you think we'd be better off and have a higher chance of benefit for them in a shorter time period?
No, that'll take, that'll take longer at the Court of Common Pleas.
Can I, but why can't we appeal the case that just happened and do the same thing? Because isn't it going to the Court of Common Pleas?
If you're filing innocent, it's double jeopardy. You can't take it right back. You have to file under another, under a complaint. And, and they've been refiled, so I think that's probably the quickest way to get something done at this point.
60 days though, right? Another 60 days.
No, it's 20 days, right?
No, that's garbage. 60 days for the roaches, another 60 days.
Wait a minute, what about the particulars?
What about the infestation with the owner and the tenant?
60 days.
That isn't filed?
No, because as we just said, we've been working with them, so there hasn't been anything additional. What we've filed on has been, at what, when you say filed, what we've sent code violation notices has been the accumulation of junk and debris and the infestation.
I filed a new complaint regarding roaches last week. About 60 days, right?
You say you're working with them, but they're not gone.
Right, but at what, that's why council needs to consult with the solicitor and most likely an executive session to decide on that. Because if you're, of trying to obtain compliance through treatment, at what point is it still a violation?
So you're saying because they're doing something, that it's no longer a violation?
I'm not saying it's not a violation, but.
But, but we have to give.
What are we going to get by filing, by sending a letter and filing again the same thing?
This process is absurd. So that these people could just keep doing the minimal thing, it's never going away and these people are living like this? There is something wrong.
Yeah, that is.
So if it was filed against Melissa the first time, then it, the court's kind of saying we should have filed against the tenant, can we not go back now and file against the tenant?
We can, but what are you going to?
It's going to take 60 days again?
I did.
This is a frigging joke.
I did last week. I filed, I mean, I, I filed a new complaint last week for the roach infestation and the garbage, which in my mind, I thought this started 60 days again. That's what I was told. No? That's what, that's what, that's what we talked about last week. It is. And I went and I told, we had a meeting and I told everyone, I started the process over again, it's 60 days now, a new 60 days. I misunderstood?
No, I, I'm not sure where you got the 60 days from, but what you sent were the pictures for the junk and debris and we have the picture from the hysteria, that's what we filed on.
That was an email, which had nothing to do with my complaint that I had written in person last week when I signed up for this council meeting. I filled out a new form in which I, I even said to you, why can't I just do a new complaint and get the 60, I actually said to get the 60 days started up again? That's exactly what I said and you said you can't. So I filled it out for the roaches and for the garbage in the back. And in my mind, I left that meeting having nothing to do with the two photos I sent you later because you asked me for those when I showed them on my phone.
Right.
I thought this cockroach thing started over again. Because I can't, like we, and the reason for that, remember, is that we don't waste any time in the meantime. So great if it's remedied in 60 days, but if it's not, at least the time started again so we, so we don't get two months from now and we, and we have to start all over again. The reason I did that last week is so that we could get it started again, so we don't waste any more time. And that was my understanding.
I mean, I mean, seriously, I, I thought we were filing against the tenant because that, that IPMC said we had to do.
Not at this point. I mean, because council needs to make that determination first. And second, if we go back to the magistrate, what's going to be the different outcome? What is she going to tell her to do? If they're going to fine her, what's that going to help? What is fineing her a thousand dollars a day going to help the situation?
Do, do we know what limitation the IPMC has? I mean, can she, could she say, you've got 30 days to clean this place up?
She can say that and say, well, if you, what MDJs will usually say is, I will fine you a thousand dollars unless you have it cleaned up after 30 days. That's typically what they'll say. They can't, the MDJ doesn't have the authority to require someone to do something.
That's what.
They can impose a fine or suspend the fine if the person complies. That's kind of the way it's set up.
They need to condemn and evict.
What's that?
They need to condemn and evict.
But we can't evict.
Right.
Yeah, we have no authority to do that. We can condemn the, we can possibly condemn the property if under the Uniform Construction Code, we can condemn the property or international property, but in its category, we can condemn the property.
Don't you know that? You don't know that?
You have to have someone that will verify that that is within that condition.
And that's why.
You can't just wave your wand and say, I think it's subjective.
But who is that? How, how?
Well, we're calling the Health Department, we're calling Children and Youth Services.
So is that Health Department that says?
They will, they will go into the home, they will be able to go into the home and evaluate.
Who condemns it? I'm sorry? Who says it can be condemned?
Well, first of all, hopefully Children and Youth get them out.
Yeah.
We would really love to have the owner allow us.
Children, Children and Youth has more power than anybody in this room and they have more power than the district, the DJ.
I agree, but the next, the next step has to be that we get another, to say.
Okay, I will, I will call, I will call them tomorrow. We've talked about children services. I will call the Department of Health tomorrow and I promise we will keep you informed as to what the response was to that, to those calls.
One, one thing, to prevent this in the future, perhaps, and just because I own properties in different places, we owned a property in Lancaster, we had sold it in March and there, if somebody complained about peeling paint, we were told, as a landlord, you got to do the peeling paint, you got to clean the yard. But other properties in other places, they have that, they go in, the town itself or the borough goes in and inspects the place. I think that Glenville even has.
Glen Rock does do that.
They can inspect every two years. Actually, what, what the outcome of this is going to be is, I think, New Freedom Borough, in my humble opinion, and one person's, one, one person's opinion, but I think we need to have a property maintenance inspection because this would not have happened if we had yearly inspections of rental properties.
We talked about that this year.
We talked about it and, and we said, we said we needed to bring it up and this is an ideal example of why you need to have a yearly rental property maintenance inspection.
Yes. On my property, on you didn't send mail?
I agree.
I paid for it.
Burnell agrees. Good. York City has it, there's a lot, Glen Rock has it, Spring Grove Borough has it now.
Yes.
I've heard that. So I, you know that we have one there, so we can certainly do that here. They don't have that here.
As a landlord, go for it.
Start right there. Go ahead.
Mayor Butcher, I, I don't think that you can say that you'll let them know what Children and Youth and the Department of Health is going to tell you because they're probably not going to tell you anything.
Well, they may not, but if, if, I will let them know they told me nothing or I will tell them that they told me something.
At least now that the call was made.
Right.
And that, you know, they'll be, you know, they'll probably say something, even if they just say, we're taking your complaint and it'll go under advisement. So whatever they say, we'll tell you.
I thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you for being so engaged.
And I thank all you.
Thank you, you're the central point of the conversation. If a house is condemned, what does that do to the neighborhood and then can it be brought back? If I were to sell my house in two years, that's going to be hard, there's empty units in there, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, once it's condemned, if the owner does not fix it and it's secured, there's no, I can't force, we can't force them to do that, you, you know, but so.
So I'm just curious.
Yeah, you would just be, you would just have to deal, you know, you have to deal with the market condition at that point. Hopefully you sell it.
More than likely, she, she's, she's got a tenant there that is, is only there so she can pay the mortgage and the taxes. No tenant, no mortgage, no taxes. Why, she, she's not going to pay it.
We can't, we can't. We're surmising a lot of.
Is fumigation still on the table? I'm just confused. Is that on the table at all, the fumigation that we spoke of earlier?
Well, we have to get it cleaned up and then we have to get it.
Because that's like my number one mission. Like that just, everything else we can talk about later, I just want them gone.
But, but I think your trash has to be gone first before the fumigation will work.
Yes, agreed.
Because you probably haven't lived it out there, so.
They're in the grass, under the porches, they're everywhere.
Well, winter has, yeah, but I told you, what I said earlier, I'm scared about spring. So it was terrible. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure he exhausted you, so.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
That's what we're here for.
It's nothing, what you guys have been going through.
You, you pay for work.
Oh, do you guys want those? You don't want?
Do you need those pictures, Andrew?
Do you want, you can have them. Also, the working contract is, is a mock contract.
Should be in here with the papers.
You can have them if they're away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Is anyone else for public comment?
That's the Christmas queen.
One more positive note. Um, I just wanted to come to say a couple of words about the 2022 parade. And for those of you who saw it, saw it. It was magnificent. In fact, we've got 14 people lined up for next year already. So anyway, um, we thank the borough for their support. We especially thank, you know, President Bobby and Manager Schaefer because anytime I would sneeze or say, can we do this or can we do that, they made it happen. And they participated, my rotting in it. So, um, also want to thank, we gave him a new name and I think he's just finding out tonight, Donnie on the spot. um, Donnie on the Spot. Because he was there, he was in my husband's ear all day. When something was to happen or whatever, Donnie was right there to make sure it was, it was taken care of. So, um, in saying that, I hope everybody enjoyed it, and we're already looking forward to next year.
Yeah, that's great. It was, it was really wonderful, and, and everybody had a great time. And, uh, I'm gonna, I know this is public comment, but since you're here, and I know you're probably going to be leaving, I did want to mention that the community support, I, I don't know if anybody knows, but right before the parade, Myra and Ron's house caught fire. I think everybody up here knows that. And the community support, the outpouring of people with donations and, and, that was just phenomenal. I mean, it really made you feel like, yeah, I'm really glad I live in New Freedom. And I think that, that was wonderful. And the front, sitting right out in front, watching your house burn, Myra said, you know, the parade's got to go on.
Got to go on, it has to go on, yes.
So. I think it just, uh, just speaks volumes for the people of New Freedom that they rallied around you for the parade and for your, your tragedy too, so.
Yes, we love New Freedom. It's nothing, you know, we, we love our town, and when we decided to do a parade, it was just like a parade, and yeah, unfortunately, you know, we had that minor setback, which is what we're calling it. But we did stand out front while the house was on fire, and we looked at each other and said, yes, the parade has to go on. And it just brought so much more joy to this town. So we're just looking to continue that.
Thank you so much for being there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Nah, hi Jim.
My name is Jim Holly, and I'm president of the New Freedom Heritage. And, uh, first, I'd like to start out with a big thank you to the borough and, and Donnie's group for installing the, our new sign. We had a new sign painted. Looks like the old one, but it's much nicer. And a new pole, which the borough purchased, and it does, what a difference it makes. We've already gotten a lot of comments on it. So I just wanted to thank you. The other thing I want to talk about is, uh, last year, uh, we were approached by Dr. Rodney Stump, who is a professor of merinus at Towson University. And he's also the treasurer of Dallas Town Area Historical Society. And you may or may not have heard of this before, but, uh, there is a state grant to historical societies and municipalities to, uh, digitize their files. And I think, talked to Andy about this, uh, last year. Anyhow, the, by the time Dr. Trump approached us until we met and started the ball rolling, the, it was too close to get the grant application done and submitted uh, before the time period ran out. So he notified me that he'll be starting probably in January. And what I'm here to ask is that the borough would join with us, or maybe we would join the borough and make the application as a joint venture. Uh, Dr. Stump indicates that this is looked upon more favorably by the people who review the grant application. He did this for Dallas Town, and you can confirm this. Uh, he got a grant for Dallas Town Borough and their Historical Society uh, in 2020, I think. And he is willing to do that for New Freedom and New Freedom Heritage, and there's no charge for this work. He's willing to do it on, as a volunteer basis. So, all I want to be able to tell Dr. Stump is that you all are in favor of proceeding with this. Now, what the grant will do is purchase the equipment and, uh, give the, give the equipment to however we want to do this, and I was thinking, uh, maybe the, we'd get one set of equipment and both organizations could use it. And you can digitize all your old files and reduce a substantial amount of space. I know we'll be able to. And also the thing, the items in the museum will be taken pictures, and then we'll digitize that. So it's a good thing, and it doesn't cost us any money.
We can, um, I'd like to make a motion that we add for, uh, we can't, I don't think we could do it this, this month, but next month we can add a, uh, to the agenda, uh, a resolution of support for digitizing and applying for the grant. And I would get, provide Andy with some information.
I'll get Andy the information on the grant from Dr. Stump.
We could write, write a resolution and, uh, bring it up at our next meeting and vote for support for the.
Very good.
So the grant is for, um, equipment, not monetary, correct? Is that what you're saying? Or maybe both?
It might be both. It might be both.
Whatever.
Because there's supplies.
Right, the grant's free, so it's.
Yeah.
I, I think I give you the money and then you select the equipment, is the way I.
That, that may be what, yeah. And I'll get the information to Andy, and, and so that he can get his minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, yeah, you further, further resolution? Um, so we have a mo, do we need a motion in a second? No, well, we've, we've got the resolution.
Uh, well, there, the grant might have specific resolution language, and most grants provide you that.
Why, we, we'll just, we'll just wait till.
For what it's worth, you could take action on that, that motion, that. Because under the sunshine law, it says, one of the exceptions to the new sunshine rule is, if during the conduct of a meeting, a matter is de minimis in nature and does not involve the expenditure of funds or entering into a contract or agreement, the agency may take official action on the matter.
Okay.
So we, we actually could do that for Jim tonight, if you guys want to.
I have a motion in a second to support the digit, uh, the, uh, writing of a grant and supporting the digitization of both borough and Historic Society, um, documentation. Dave seconded it. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? My vote is aye.
Thank you all.
Any other public comment?
I've been here a while. My name's Donnie Delarque Sineley. I've grew up in town, grew up on Main Street, and I live three houses down the street here. Been in the fire department for forty-five years, and I know every inch of this town. My purpose is just coming here, you guys might, I'll make this quick, you guys might already have the answers to it, but I'm not. From everybody that I've talked to all over town, it's, it's funny, like, we, we just went through this thing with garbage. Your garbage contract. Uh, I don't know if you've heard anybody talk about it. A lot of people don't know what's really, what's going on because of the way it was brought out to us. That's near here, there. I understand with contracts and with product and things in this world, everything's going up, and the service isn't quite as good. Going right from buying a half a gallon of Carmody's ice cream, went up to ten bucks, and it's not a half a gallon anymore. However, I just wanted to get a couple questions with how this thing's working. I understand, because of the way this town's kind of made up of two different ways of developments that are open, parking, with streets that like, I live on Main Street, Franklin Street, where they're talking about this arms service. I have a house in Delaware, and I have an armed service, and it works fine, because we put our garbage right out on the street. I just want to know how, first of all, I know this, you know, with the price going up, we're losing a day, we're losing bulk, per se, unless it's called and, and called and made a schedule or something like that. And I was, it says that because of reasons, the bulk is because of animals and barnets or something like that. Now, with that said, I can only tell you that the guy that wants to put his mattress out on the street, you get picked up on a Friday when you know it's being picked up, is now going to throw it in his backyard, and let it sit there probably for six months before he decides to call.
Oh, and, and it's still going to get picked up on Friday, he just has to call.
Just what I just, I, I just said, for the guy that doesn't, all these people that aren't going to want to make phone calls every week. I just, I understand it's going to happen, but my biggest concern is these arms that supposedly we're told we have to put, we have to put our cans three feet from a mailbox, three feet from a telephone pole, three feet from a parked car. How do you do that on constitutional level? How do you do that on Franklin Street? How do you do that on Main Street?
It's my, it's my understanding that there still will be a truck with a person who, who loads. So that if, you know, you can't get, I mean, that's going to happen if someone pulls up and parks your cans in.
Can't stop somebody from parking in front of my girl's can.
So there will be somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, there will be somebody on a, to load those cans in. So it's not going to be, that's the only thing they use. They still are under contract to pick up all of the trash. And if they can't get to it because of the way the street is, or because the houses are so close together, and there's no room, whatever, they'll, they will still be done.
So the whole idea of this was to have trucks, down, where I'm, down Delaware, they have one guy. But you're still going to have two guys on a truck, so where's the advantage of having?
Because it won't be for every street. They will identify where they have to go with the loader. So they might come, they might spend, say, six hours in New Freedom with an arm loading, but they might identify four streets, or however, however many areas.
I mean, the way it was advertised to us, it told us this is how it's going to be, in the letter.
Yeah, in the, the flyer that went out from Penn Waste, it was just more of a blanket statement.
And, and I get that, but so everybody would estimate, what do you do when, when somebody parks in front of your garbage can, and it gets missed?
Basically, the people along those streets, exactly what you're doing now, it's just with a new can.
So, but, but we're still, the, the, we're still, so we're still losing a day, we're still losing all, basically, on a free, you know, you know, every Friday on its own without a phone call, we're losing that.
Well, you were supposed to call in now, the way the old one was, because I had to.
I've never called in here, living here for forty, fifty years.
Yeah, they didn't pick mine up, and they said, well, you were supposed to call, this was two years ago.
I've never called in.
Yeah, this was two years ago.
It depends on the driver.
Yeah.
If they have someone.
It also depends on if they have a road. This way, they know how many bunks they have, they'll send a separate truck for that.
And we're also, we're also using one specific garbage can, and now we're limited to how much garbage we can put out.
Well, I, I actually started, I mean, I was telling Kim this, I mean, I actually started recycling, we, we started recycling everything we could. And it's surprising how little trash you have, once you recycle all the plastics and all the, everything that you can possibly put, and you're unlimited on recycling.
Right.
So it's to your advantage.
Well, you're unlimited in what fits in the can.
Right.
One can.
Yeah.
No, more than one can.
Recyclable you can have, or.
But, I mean, you, you would agree that
You can use your.
We've, we've pretty much taken, I like what this, with the letter that I did read, it said was for better, serve, to serve the community better. I don't know how you're serving it better when you're losing a day, losing your capacity, and your prices going up. But that's, it is what it is. But my biggest question was, which we answered, is how we're going to get this, with these arms that are reaching, and in the direction, say, you can't block the sidewalk, and you can't block the street. So are we supposed to put these things back in the yard? Off the sidewalk?
No, it's supposed to be at the curb.
Okay. But like you said, the general, the thing was, do not block the sidewalk. Which, that's the only place you ever put them.
We're gonna, I mean, you know, I hate, I hate to say it, but we're gonna have to implement and see what happens, see where we have problems.
Right.
Make sure we correct the problems, and make sure everyone is satisfied. That's all we can do at this point.
So the ice cream containers, not, not a half a gallon anymore?
That's true. It's a good example.
Thank you very much.
Sugar ain't five pounds anymore.
May I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk with you. My name is Arlene Brown, and I live at Two Leader Road. Uh, my neighbor's with me, she lives at One Leader Road. So it, we each have about, I have a little over an acre. And there's a lot of yard debris, there's a whole lot of old trees up all through there. And, uh, we were all flabbergasted. All the neighbors have been talking about this, because when you go from six, um, bags or trash cans, each pickup, that makes twelve, with two pickups, we're now down to one ninety-six gallon bucket for trash, for anything. And of course, the, the recycling is, is part of it, but I don't have a whole lot of recycling, but I can tell you that, uh, with yard debris, that I have got a lot of hedge rows, there's a lot of dead wood, anytime we have a storm, these big old trees. Uh, you know, Borough does a great job of picking up our leaves, vacuuming them. And I know we have new equipment, I've seen that, I, but we were just, we're, we're really concerned. What are we going to do? How do we get rid of that? I can tell you that I know that we have neighbors in the back of us, and to the sides of us, that burn debris, and I don't know how the borough sits about with all that, but I can tell you that that's kind of the only other option that we have now, to do that, because there's no way. I can give, I can have out there the maximum of six big forty-two, forty-five gallon plastic bags of yard debris, each time. So now, my question is, I'm not the only one that is up in arms about this. And it's a matter of volume and that debris and not being able to get rid of it.
I, I do have to tell you that the old contract did not allow yard waste and yard debris. So, if you're hidden in a garbage bag and didn't get caught, you're lucky.
No, that's not true, because I've been there twenty-four years, I've been in this house twenty-three years, I've paid my property taxes, you know, and, and I, and ever since then, it's always been, and even on the website with Penn Waste, it said that you could have six, uh, containers, either bags for, or receptacles, you know, I mean, bags, cans, that type of thing. And that was always okay, and that's what, that's what occurs. You know, there are people up through there that do clip, uh, bag their, their, uh, clippings from their, their yard, but it's not just the lawn, it's, you know, it's the old trees. So what happens? Is that, is that our only alternative? Uh, we were, we were encouraged when we saw the minutes for tonight, because it, it looked like maybe there is an opportunity for a possible amendment to our contract with, with Penn Waste. You know, I have people that I know that are from Lancaster and other areas, and I know that Penn Waste, I did call them and talk to them, I know that they do have special debris-type pickups, yard debris pickups in certain areas, Lancaster's one of them. And I think, uh, Manchester, West Manchester, or something township. I mean, there are other areas that they do this for, and I would like to, to know with the borough, if our council would consider this contract, and maybe, uh, introducing a, an amendment to the contract to allow for, even if it were a once a month, you know, we're going to hit this.
So you're not talking every week, you just need?
We need help. We absolutely need help, because I can tell you now, my son doesn't live with me. But I am not a young person, and I'm going to have a lot to deal with. He's going to build me a, a burning pit. And I don't like that idea, because I think it's going to get out of control. I know there's a lot of homes up in that area. They're going to be faced with the same thing that I'm faced with, and it could be a real liability. I would like it to go on record as my concern in that way, that people will begin to get rid of their yard debris by burning. I don't know how the council feels, I don't know anything about it. I'm embarrassed to say, I have been here twenty-four years, and this is the first council meeting I've come to. I'm so sorry. And I would like to come periodically, just to make sure I understand what's happening, because I was flabbergasted. I got that, that, uh, notice from Penn Waste on a Friday afternoon late after the borough office closed, and I stirred all weekend. Called my son, what am I going to do? And, and the neighbors were all talking about it. So I'm not the only one, you know. I know that there's a small area of the entire, uh, community that, uh, that have a lot of yard debris to deal with, and there are a lot of areas that do not have that. But we're a community, and I just feel like we need to help all of us. You know, I've paid school tax, I've paid for twenty-four years my property tax, and I've never had a child in the school system, but I went to their bingo, because I support the good school systems that we have here. So we all need to take care of all of us. And that, so that's, I appreciate your time.
Can you check with, uh, Penn Waste and see if we can, if there's any possibility of adding like a, once a year?
We already provide treatment.
Well, it'd be more than once a year.
We provide tree them service, and we provide yard waste.
Yeah, that's true. It's not a, it's not a.
Leaf collection.
Leaf collection, that's.
Leaf collection is one thing.
What's the definition of yard waste? I, I've never seen.
Well, there's a hedge row in the back of my yard, it goes all the way across the back between my neighbor and I. And, and I have to get out there and trim that back, and it, and it makes for, I would say probably eight bags, big bags of that, those, uh, you know, forty-two gallon bags, let's say. When I do that, my son will come over and bag it up, would it, you can't leave it there, it kills everything. There's a lot of old trees, and anytime you get a rain, just a little bit of wind, there's tons of, I can get two big trash cans filled with sticks. Am I, am I exaggerating, Bart? She lives across the street, and they do the same thing. You know, it's, so it's not something, it won't fit in that ninety-six gallon. And it wouldn't need to, it would be more than once a year, it would, you know, it would be in those times after the, even during leaves, you know, that when they pick up the leaves, they make a point to tell us that you can't have sticks in, mixed in with the leaves, because the borough knows that that is a problem for the machine. because the Borough knows that that is a problem for the machine.
Okay, it was, what it actually says is tree limbs not to exceed eight inches in diameter, which is fairly big limb, shall be collected by the Borough at curbside on the second and fourth Tuesdays in April, May, June, September and October. All tree limbs must be curbside by seven AM of the day designated for pickup. So those would be your times to do your pruning and your hedge row and.
Where, where, that wasn't in the floor?
This is not, this is, this is us.
Oh, this is the Borough.
This is the Borough, we do limb pickup.
We pick.
And we can, we'll, we'll be putting this on Savvy Citizen, so it'll, are you on Savvy Citizen?
I, I will be, I, I got online and I saw it, I think it's a great idea.
So this will be on Savvy Citizen, but this is the limb pickup. And, you know, and have you gone on, can you get on the Borough website?
Yes, I did, I did, and I saw Savvy Citizen, I told Bart I would talk to him.
Okay, well, we'll put the tree limb if we can, we'll put the tree limb pickup on the Borough website too, so that you know exactly what days and what months it starts.
Perfect, and so what are we talking about? When does it start and can you just repeat that to me?
Five month.
They'll start in April.
April, May, June, September, October.
There's last, there's one pickup in April, two in May and one in June.
For limbs.
For springtime.
One in April, two in May and one in June, is that right?
Yes.
Right? Those are the limb pickups, okay.
And then there'll be another four days in the fall.
That's good.
It'll be two in September and two in October.
Oh, that's perfect, because, yeah, because like now.
You just have to, you just have to time your trimming a little bit.
We've been, we've been doing that since nine to five.
That's crazy, because no, nobody's been using it up our street that we know of.
Well, if you bundle, we used to be, had to call and tie them up and put a tag on it and all this stuff.
And you had to go buy, purchase a tag, that was a long time ago.
If you would call into the office, like in the summertime, when we're not having the pickups, they were telling you to do that because Penn Waste was saying they would take that stuff if you would bundle. That's why the offices were telling you that Penn Waste would do it if you bundled it. They won't, you just can't throw a pile of limbs out there, Penn Waste isn't gonna pick it up.
Right, well, you know, okay, you know, they do have, I know Lancaster has these big, that you get at BJ's or different places, they're, they're paper, they're, it's all paper and they're about this big around and they stand about this high, that people will put their yard debris and Penn Waste picks it up. And I'm wondering, you know, this, what we're talking about when we say dead wood, we're talking about sticks this big, this big around and hundreds and hundreds of them, so we can't really.
Well, they don't, they don't, you don't need them to be bundled, right? Yeah, so you just, you just put them out and the Borough will take care of that.
Just if you have bigger limbs, make sure your butt ends are out towards the street, it's easier.
That's the big, that's the big stuff, that's the big stuff. But I'm talking about a whole huge trash can filled with, with wood, you know, sticks, more like sticks. That is just, you know, it could be a piece this big, it could be a piece this big around and this short and it's, and, and it's rotten wood off of these giant old trees. I, so I don't, I don't know how to, how, you can't, if I set it out there, the Borough can't possibly pick up all these pieces. That's ludicrous, that would take them a long time to do that.
Well, you're gonna put, you said you put them in cans, so as long as they're in cans.
So we could do, keep them in the cans, is that okay? Would that be okay for the?
Yeah, if you, if you, if, for those weeks that we, for those specific weeks that we have in this region in the fall.
Yeah.
If you're gonna pick them up and put them in a can, set the can out there, I'll, we'll know to do.
That's beautiful, okay, then we can start doing this. Okay, okay, does that sound right?
Really, I see that easy, a, a little bit maybe a clarity on why the council made the decision that we made on, on the trash pickup. So we currently pay five hundred and eighty-eight thousand for what we have now. And if we stayed with exactly what we have now going forward, the very first year would have jumped up an additional two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the very first year. By the end of year five, you would have been paying over one million dollars a year. We had, we had the rep here, so changing to just removing the one service a week, the very first year is only gonna go up by sixty-five thousand dollars. And at the end of the five years, the cost will be eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So I think that maybe adds a little bit of context to it. I know people don't like it, people were upset, but it was a huge jump in money.
Well, I get that, you know, I really do, but I have to tell you that I, my career was in business. And, and I worked for international corporation and, and the accounting background. And I have to say that, you know, my thoughts on this is that Penn Waste, I understand inflation, I get, I get where we are in our economy. But at the same time, I have to say that Penn Waste is building, really growing their balance sheet. I mean, they are making their company extremely valuable by, by charging more than inflation. And by coming up with all the new equipment and everything that they're doing, this, their, their organization is going to be a whole lot more valuable on paper than it is today at our expense.
And this is a brand new company, this is a, a multi-million, hundred million, million dollar company that purchased the old Penn Waste. This isn't the same Penn Waste that we have.
As interesting as all this is, we really do have to move on.
I hope that answered your question, I hope you'll be able to, to put the cans out and let public works pick it up.
You know, I appreciate the time, I really do, because I will take this back to my neighbors.
Want to say, Penn, and the unfortunate thing, Penn Waste was the only one that placed a bid to keep it like it was. We didn't, there was no, there was nothing else, they were the only bidder.
They received two bids.
Well, and that was, for, to keep it like it is, there was only the one bid from Penn Waste. There was two bids on the, to change it to what it is now, and we took the lesser of the two.
I don't wanna hold anything up, thank you very much.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I've, I've had that ninety-six gallon toter for several years now. And I throw a number of sticks in there, you could put a lot in that ninety-six gallon toter and they don't look in it before they take it.
Not if the machine's gonna take it anyway.
It's, well, don't ask, don't tell.
You can go ahead and put that in there, I do it fine.
Well, you know, but with the other pickups, what you're, you've given us something to work with, you know? It just felt like we were out on the land, so.
So, yes, very good. All right, thank you very much. Any, any other public comment?
I just have one, Andy Schaefer, there was a lady here earlier, her name was Lisa Kolb, K-O-L-B. She wanted to talk about this also, but she asked a couple of us if we were here for that and we said no. So she said it was useless and she left. If you want to give her a call.
Oh, for about the trash?
Yes. Because she also had the same issue with yard waste, so maybe she's not aware of this, they've been picking it up for the same reason.
Can we, can we put something out that explains it better?
Yeah, that's why I suggested Andy put that on the website about the limb pickup.
Yeah, I've been here seventy years and I think we had a limb pickup.
What about a Savvy Citizen, the five hundred or so that have it, a little push out?
Again, our.
And a newsletter?
Evergreen newsletter.
It's a newsletter.
Be a good topic for the newsletter.
We're starting a newsletter in January, so hopefully you get more information.
All right. All right, let's get a shot at approval in some minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the November, uh, twenty-two bits.
I have a motion to approve. For now, seconds. Discussion, corrections, changes. Okay, no discussion.
I just have a question on that, so the camera wasn't working last month?
Correct.
So.
The camera was working.
It was, it was a hard record.
So we have audio of it from what Andrew takes, can the audio be put on the website in place of the video that didn't get taken?
Did you save the audio?
We should have it, because we have to have approved those minutes, yes, we have to save it.
Yeah, it has to be saved until the minutes are approved.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so you put those minutes, thank you.
That's not a bad idea, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. Treasurers report.
Motion to approve November twenty-two, Treasurers report.
Motion to approve. Need a second?
Second.
On page nine was, that really BUP insurance, B-U-P-P? Page nine, BUP, B-U-P-P insurance? Okay, I was, I was just curious. I don't remember that one.
Any other questions, comments? Flags, were those the new flags for up the community center?
On page thirty?
It just says flags. Comdata.
Yeah, that would have been. There was a flag, there was a flag ordered for the community center and I, I know that we always, always order the flags for the, the parade. On headway, headway, so that, I'd do that as well.
Anything else?
I just wanna, not gonna talk about it tonight, but the HVAC at the community centers costs seventeen thousand plus this year. That's gonna have to be addressed at some point, we're gonna talk about, but I think you're looking at a actual estimate?
Yes, for, for additional.
For the brains of it, okay.
We actually have to consider, I mean, it's fifteen years old. So do we spend however many thousands of dollars to upgrade the brains with a system that's fifteen years old? Or do we look at replacing the system? So that's.
Page twenty-two, nine hundred dollars in cleanings for the community center, six cleanings, nine hundred dollars. How come that much?
Didn't we institute an in-between cleaning protocol?
A hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars pays, well, that's six cleanings, that's four weeks, no, but a hundred and fifty dollars covers what? Every time she comes, it's a hundred and fifty?
Yes.
And what is she cleaning for that? Isn't it just the common areas, the bathroom, the gym and the hall?
Yes.
Uh, how long does that take?
Quite a few hours, she's spending quite a few hours there every time.
Three, four hours.
Yeah, she's.
Three or four hours? And so she's gonna come four times a month for one fifty? And then did we talk about, after we have somebody there, you're gonna call her back out, it's gonna be one fifty that time too?
We talked about that if there's a rental that would occur on a Saturday, an all-day rental, um, that we would make her available on, or see if she would be available to clean Saturday night or early Sunday if the rentals are back to back, so that the facility's clean for the next renter.
And we're looking at charging the renter that fee and that doesn't go back, correct? That's part of our discussion.
Yeah, basically to increase that rental fee to cover that cost.
Or take it out of the deposit. And that's not, actually, we're gonna discuss our fees.
That fee schedule has to be there, but it's, or should it be there now?
We just rolled it in with the charge rather than breaking it out separately.
How much is it if she comes and does that spot cleaning, still a hundred and fifty?
It'd be, it'd be a full cleaning unless we negotiate something different.
What is the plans?
The plan was to do a full cleaning, because it's most areas that would be, the public would have access to.
After it was rented?
Yeah.
So what?
I thought it was just the bathrooms, we talked about the bathrooms.
There's been no decision.
Okay, got you.
So you throw a hundred and fifty into that fee to cover her when she comes and does a spot cleaning?
No, we did not, because we weren't.
We're gonna absorb that.
Well, I think the rental fee is already, it did increase a little bit, but the rental fee is also high enough for this area and what you're charging for the facility. At some point, it was creating too many issues and we have to get it rented and get it cleaned before the next renter comes in.
Ambulance and fire, does fuel come out of their fire tax?
Yes.
Used to, okay, all right.
It hits the expense account, which is used to offset the balance of the tax of the tax receipt.
Right, I got you. I just wanna make sure, so I've been complaining about fuel, for diesel especially. Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. Andy, we, we missed a point.
I have a recommendation, yeah.
We missed number four.
I was gonna say, consider time to adjourn, I have a recommendation that, I think there's a lot of this that we can skip over, table till next time, because when we come back in January, we're here for twenty-five minutes, that we need to get to the meat of everything that's here.
We don't reorganize in January.
Oh, we don't come back, don't come back the very first?
No.
I thought, I thought that was mandatory, you had to come back like the first, even years.
Even years for boroughs.
So we take, table like a lot of this that we don't need to address tonight being.
Well, we should be able to breeze through most of this, so let's just, let's just keep online and see where we get. And we could always make a motion to continue at any time.
Well, this is a holiday month, we got Christmas, people traveling, and I don't think that's appropriate for this month to be doing that.
Okay, March Goodfellow Park Improvisance. That's tabled, right?
Yeah, no update, still in progress.
Okay. Uh, sign regulation update, that's something we've been talking about for a long time and.
Yep, and Wade and I have got drafted, uh, put everything together with all the exhibits. Sister James currently has that for his review, and then, once we incorporate his comments, we'll come back to council.
Okay, so that comes back next month?
Well.
Will, will we know what the old, um, was versus the new?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, next month or?
Sure.
Okay.
Cause one, you have a fund.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right, Stormwater Channel on North Constitution update.
Uh, just a quick update, Arrow did complete the wetland delineation. They also completed the PNBI review, uh, to make sure that there's no threatened species in the area. So all of that came back, they're putting that whole application together for that joint, joint, uh, joint permit application.
So we're still months away, six months away?
Yeah, I mean, it takes time to just get, put the application together, because you have to have all those clearances basically put into place with the application.
I didn't notice it, so it hasn't even been submitted yet?
No.
Okay, and then you're working in conjunction with that, is that for an easement also?
Yeah, once we have everything in place and that permit is applied for, we'll go back to the property owners to work on getting those easements to be able to go in and do the work.
And the easements are from this Constitution to the back of the property, where Franklin is, you want an easement through that whole area?
Everywhere where there's a pipe.
Basically, yeah, it would be from Constitution Avenue down to the daylight of the pipe.
Only so we can get in and fix the pipe if it clogs up.
And then the channel would be on, on the burden side.
Right. All right. Uh, consider approval ordinance amending Chapter Thirty, Manager, Administrator, these are the words that, um, the mayor came back with and we updated it to reflect what he, what he wanted, so.
Yeah, put it under the right section.
Correct. So I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion that we accept Section Eight of Section Thirty dash eight.
Okay.
All second.
First and second, is there any other discussion?
I have a question on when people fill in for our meetings for minutes, are they paid overtime for this?
They usually take comp time, so like if someone worked, um, three hours over to take minutes for the meeting, then they would get, take three hours sometime during the week off or.
And I still say that our meetings are scheduled a year in advance, so I don't see the need for vacation or previous engagement when there's a clear one-year advance notice of when our meetings are.
Well, we actually are approving the meetings tonight, so we can, if you want to change a meeting date, we can do that tonight.
Well, does Andrew know that he's not gonna be here in twenty-twenty-three at a meeting?
I'm sorry?
Does Andrew know that he's not, he's not gonna be here already for twenty-twenty-three for a meeting?
I, I don't know.
Okay, but he'll know the meeting dates.
Right, he'll know the meeting dates.
The year of the dance, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pos? My vote is aye. For now, you can say it. Bernal, you can say it.
Yeah, aye also.
Okay, thank you. Consider approval of ordinance opening a portion of Summit Alley. That was the hearing that we just had. I'm sorry, did skip Solid Waste. I must have checked it off twice. Yes, Solid Waste, Chapter One Eighty-three, Solid Waste Recycling. This just ratifies the...
This is just to change to make sure that the borough's ordinance and contracts stay the exact same thing and clean up some of the outdated language throughout various sections.
This actually has the...
Tree limit.
Tree limit information, right? I would entertain a motion to accept the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have the first and Bernal's the second. Any other discussion?
Section four, I think there's a type of empty containers shall be removed from the curb line then six AM. Should it be by six AM?
Is that Section Four?
Yes, I just made like Page Five, Section Four.
There's two more before that one.
Oh, I missed that.
Should be not later than?
No later than.
No.
Oh, that's, okay, that's what's missing.
On page two. Page, on the back of the first page, page two. I have a collection point, the fourth line up from the bottom, there's just an S in the middle. I don't know what it should say.
Made at either as...
Collection should be made at either...
Either as the Borough Council may from time to time?
Yes.
As.
Okay, and then at the top of the next page, garbage, the third line, minimum amount of F E liquid, F E E. Is there a F liquid?
I think it's pretty creative.
Okay. And then I was just a little confused on the back of the next page, bottom, unit of refuge. Talks about the ninety-six gallon cart or totter with a maximum of three units. The unit is, it sounded like to me, I had like bags.
A single quantity of refuse having a maximum gross weight, including the container, amount of fifty pounds or something. That's a unit of refuse.
And you're allowed three of those and your ninety-six.
Could that be sworted differently so people don't think that three units, I can only put three bags in my, I mean...
You can fill your, you can fill your...
Yes.
Well, I know you can, but somebody might let it, you know, I just think that...
People just sat here and said they have the ordinance for twenty-four years.
That's right, well, you know. There's always room for improvement out there.
Well, we need to adopt this this evening so it can apply to the contract when it starts. So if you wanna come back, we can do, we can amend it later, but I'm just... That's how your old ordinance read too, for the most part. We just changed the numbers.
Are the typebooks gonna be fixed?
We can, yeah, they're, they're minor, they don't have to re-advertise.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay. All in favor? With the, I guess, with the type of corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, now we're gonna look at Summit Alley. We've already had the hearing. And Tim, Tim, did you have a question?
I believe with the third whereas, I think that should be West Main Street. That's not East Main Street.
It should be.
Yeah. The problem started to tracks. So do speak.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance changing the third whereas to West Main Street.
Ooh.
Motion?
Second.
And second, any other discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Well, on the first whereas, I see borough capitalized everywhere, but that second line, the borough's not capitalized. Should borough be always capitalized? Because they're on and off.
There, it's referred to New Freedom Borough as the borough.
Okay.
That specifically, that's why it's in parentheses there.
Uh-huh. Down lower, like the borough, it's capitalized again, like under Section One, I just...
It's, it's not the specific, it's a general borough.
Okay.
That's what, I think that's what's referring to.
Right, when it's the specific, it should be capitalized. When it's general, it's not.
Right. Okay, I don't remember if you just take a better... Very basic, okay.
No, I do, I don't think there was a but.
No, what? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye with the change to West Main Street. Request for handicap parking space. I went by there today and I took a picture. If you, if we put in the handicap parking spaces showing this picture and we run the yellow line all the way back, you could see that the handicap parking space basically takes up the entire space in front of the house. Right now, today, there were two cars parked in front. Tomorrow, there will only be room for one. I'd also like to point out that the, the house has a garage and access to the back on level, on level ground. So I'm wondering if we need to revisit whether it needs a park, a handicap parking spot or...
Does the yellow line change?
I'm sorry?
Does the size of the yellow line change?
Well, I think what happens is, what actually happens is, is you put it in per code, which requires it to be back further from the cross alley, street. And so, yeah, it's gonna take...
Because it's a handicap?
Okay. Right, Donnie? Right.
The, the garage that you mentioned, this is a two-unit house?
It's a two, I believe it's a duplex and...
It's a duplex, does the individual who's requesting this have access to that garage?
Yes. I drove down the alley.
I'm just...
Every one of those have their own.
So there's an individual garage for each, okay, alright.
I'm, I'm just questioning, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I just think we should think about it before we, before we do it. Those were just my two concerns.
And if it's a handicap spot, then it is open for anybody who would be...
Well, this would be reserved.
There actually is, there actually is mall that says it can be reserved.
Okay, so what we're talking about would be a reserve?
Yes.
Then that takes the parking away from the person's house that's gonna go in front of.
And they have three cars.
So we spent a lot of time on this, I'd say twenty-five, thirty minutes. And I think that was important information to know before it came to us to know that that curb was yellow. And I would just ask, like in the future, when we get requests like that from citizens to please have Code Enforcement, Public Works, whoever needs to go out and just check it out, you know, so that we know when we're debating this, talking about it, this situation, we could have known beforehand.
We didn't even think we could have reserved.
But you wouldn't know?
We didn't know we could have reserved and the second thing is, I, I didn't realize that you had to extend the yellow line that far.
Yeah.
That, well, that's exactly why. If they were to go out there and say, and they could tell us, well, in front of her house is the yellow line, she lives on the corner and, you know, you can't put one in front. I mean, this is information, I think it would have been, it would have changed our outcome quite possibly for what we did last month.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Donnie told you that last month.
That we had...
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I did.
That we did?
Yeah.
I think he did say we'd take up, pretty much take up the space.
But I guess, I guess what I didn't know is that it wasn't a whole home for like one, the lady. I didn't know the whole home wasn't the lady. I didn't know that the home was split down the middle. I guess that's important information that could have changed our...
But, but he told you there was two homes, you'd be taking up the parking for the next house, and he told you how many feet it was gonna have to be from the curb.
But when you say two homes, I'm thinking two homes, one, two, not as one. I guess it was just better, better clarity, I guess, could have helped for me.
So... Not guaranteeing it won't happen again, but anyway, this is the facts of the matter.
Did you advertise an ordinance for this?
No.
I believe you need to.
Well, I think, I think we're, yeah, I think, I think we're saying this, you know. Yeah, before, I, I thought we should come back and look at it before we advertise an ordinance for it.
I guess, Julie, what I'm trying to say is having this picture, Julie, then having the picture like we have now, the picture, I think would have been helpful then, when we were, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, absolutely. And I think, I think that's probably a good general statement that we probably should do the engineering work before we make, make a motion.
Thank you for bringing it to me, Donnie. I just didn't process it how you meant it.
Anyway, I'm opening it up for discussion. I mean, that's my...
The yellow line is the normal thing you have at the end of each curb anyway, right?
It's just a little longer because it's a handicap spot.
I think they assume, I think they would assume that there are potential for a handicap van or something along those lines.
Yeah, it's twenty feet off of the intersection, right?
Right. That's vehicle code.
But that's like the regular, what would it be if it was a handicap spot? You said it's further.
Or if it wasn't a handicap, twenty feet off the intersection?
Well, no, it's still twenty feet.
Oh, so it's the same?
Yeah, it's still the same.
So that, but right now, that's not, that's not...
Right now, it's twenty feet.
Yeah, the yellow, yeah, the yellow line has to be twenty feet from the intersection, then you can start the handicap space after that.
Why isn't it twenty feet now? Did we miss painting it?
I think they, we did the sidewalk there and we haven't done the curving thing for a while. We need to, we just haven't had time to do it. We've had short guys for a couple of years.
Okay.
I will, I will tell you that Judge Sweetie will have people come over and do that, and she will put that time towards their court calls if we need it.
That's true.
I'm just throwing that out. She's, we have somebody in town now that's doing it.
That aside, the request for handicap parking space, what, what, what say you?
Well, the, the person that lives next door, do they know anything about this?
Probably not.
Well, I'm just thinking it's gonna be...
Oh, I think they know.
Okay, then...
Because they've rolled it up.
Then if they don't have a problem and they haven't been here to, to wish a problem.
They work it. It's, they have listed to me, they're, because they have to...
As a general comment, if we, I mean, this is gonna happen a lot. If somebody has what could be made handicap access on their property in the form of a garage and a sidewalk, do we want to take street parking to make a handicap parking space when it could be done on the premises of the property that they already own? That's my question, I guess.
Well, there is a sidewalk too, you can get up. I mean, I've, I've seen that. There's, it's just a lot farther.
Oh, yeah, that's true, Tim.
And there's actually space in the back of her yard before you get to the garage, and she could have a pad, but like right there.
There's a lot of room. I mean, it's a nice lot.
Narrow.
There's a lot of room that it's, yeah, it's narrow.
Narrow but long.
Narrow but long. So you could actually put a handicap parking space on the property in the back too?
In the back.
Andy?
Really? She could have just put a driveway back there behind the house, couldn't she?
Absolutely, but that's my, that's my point, that's my, go ahead.
Just a question, if you take, that has a handicap ramp out there where the yellow line is at the corner. If you make another handicap spot behind it, not even worried about taking up people's parking, what makes, who pays for making that handicap ramp accessible per code today? Because if you paint that curb blue for a handicap parking spot, what type of work has to be done to make that ADA compliant?
That's a really, that's a really good question.
I ran into that when we had to do the new sidewalks, those deep straight cuts.
I don't believe you have to retrofit it for that.
For that, we don't?
I don't believe so.
And she now has, has her wheelchair accessible. Not that that's...
I don't think she's in a wheelchair.
Right.
Right there at the beginning of that, is, is that a handicap accessible? I can't tell. Usually, I don't think it is because usually they're yellow.
It's the press curbing with a somewhat...
Like we have in Constitution when we had to redo those. Except for my house.
So you saying about her putting that parking pad in the back, does our ordinances for properties and stuff in that section, is it gonna allow her to do that?
Again, there might be coverage issues with that.
Yeah, I mean, she'd have to pay the variance, is that right?
If, if she would receive coverages, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, under ADA though, I mean, that would be a hardship case and I would, I would think that... Would have been?
Is there any in ADA don't necessarily...
Don't care about each other? Well, they probably do have coverage issues, I don't know, I guess.
Maybe not.
So what's the opinion of council? Do we table this until we can get, find out about lot coverage and whether or not we can put in a pad, or do we wanna go forward with an ordinance to put the spot in?
Well, we, we, we looked at it last month.
I'm sorry, Ryan?
They said we wouldn't be putting it in the homeowner, or would be putting it in?
On, on, well, but you, we would have to at least look at it to see, I mean, I guess it's different if they have to go get a variance. So I think we could at least say, look at it in the sense that if they don't have to get a variance, then it'd be very doable. It's a little harder if they have to get a variance.
Why don't we table it and pending, Wade, take a look at that?
And our discussion last month was, our discussion last month was, she needs to, she needs to provide proof from, to us from a physician and the fact that...
She did.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, she did actually, yeah.
I didn't know that, because she wasn't, she wasn't here at the...
Was stable to the request.
Yeah, should we have a copy of them?
Doctor notes?
I think it's more of a doctor's note.
There actually is an MVA form that you can fill out.
I have to, you have to, yeah.
She has a card. That's for a plaque together.
Not for a handicap parking space.
No, 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 but I'm, did she quantify that she's got a handicap placard?
It's not what the ordinance says.
You have to have a placard to park in a handicap spot. So she would have to have a placard when she got it from the DMV. Well, she can't park in front of her own handicap spot unless she's...
It's kinda silly to ask for one if you can't park.
Yeah, that's a silly...
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, so hey, you never know. Sometimes people just...
We table this until next month and we, we...
I have a motion and Bernal agreed, so we'll use Bernal as a second and to table this until next month and ask, ask Wade to go out and look at the property to see if it's possible to put a pad in about. I have a motion, the second, any other discussion? All in favor of tabling until next month? So aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, quality of life or your ordinance? No?
Should probably two.
Probably table that, okay. So you want to have a problem with tabling that until next month?
Would this have any effect on what we discussed a little earlier?
You're not gonna get it in that. You're not gonna get it in that, correct?
I've got questions. I've got questions.
Oh, yeah. I even have questions.
Okay, I just think it would be an excellent idea.
Alright, so that's tabled. Approval or request from Southern York County Senior Center for a six-month extension of their current lease for space at the Community Center. Basically, they've asked council to at least consider extending their current lease until our new fiscal year when we plant, can plan for any increases that may be coming in advance. I would, I would, I mean, I know it's the Senior Center, love the Senior Center, they do lots of good things, but what...
Make that a motion first to discuss this?
Well, it's discussing correspondence and you want a motion to... It's not really, um...
We're not voting on it.
Yeah.
I thought that we were.
You could, you could do, I, well, I was gonna make, go ahead, alright, we'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, I apologize.
Accept the letter, I guess.
Accept the, the conditions of the letter. Except the, the conditions of the letter, it seems so.
So you're making a motion to consider extending their lease for the new, until the new fiscal year, which is six months from now, so they can plan for any increases?
Yes.
I second.
I have a second.
I second.
Alright, now we can discuss.
Now you can discuss.
Alright. Anyway, the, I understand they're, they're wanting to, and I do understand it's the senior center, but what you would normally do if they weren't the senior center and they were a business is you would write them a six-month lease at the new rate and let them have that until they can, they can match up with their fiscal year, because their intent is to match up with their fiscal year and have their lease start June first, or June thirtieth, I guess.
This'll only happen once.
Second?
It'll only happen once until we get in sync.
It'll only happen once, yeah. I mean, that, you know, the question is, is...
Not really, because you're asking, you're saying you would increase the rate to what?
To what it is for six months?
Correct. So really, you're putting it in effect for six, for six months, you're putting the new lease in place for six months. They're asking you to consider not to raise it yet.
Well, it's not the, it's not the motion.
That's, that's what I understood.
The motion is kind of the way that it is.
It's a session, if I, Andy doesn't necessarily think we should do it.
And I guess my question was, once we've done that, then we, then we can make the changes or whatever we need to do, and we'll be in sync every year.
Yeah, that's true, same.
Does that cause any problems with the borough as far as anything else with getting on the same schedule as their budget? No, we just, we just budget for that, that's not... We're just gonna lease payments throughout the year. I mean, I think the only thing with that is, that still impacts their budget halfway through their year. And if...
You mean this, this one?
Right, if you were to do a six-month lease with the increase. And then the other thing it doesn't allow is, that means that you could kick them out in six months.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they, they're looking for a longer term with, with our discussions.
Well, but this would just be extending the lease for six months, so we can still...
Yeah, I understand.
So we had their lease in September. When was the senior center notified of that new lease that we passed in September?
Right after the meeting.
Right after the meeting. And why are they waiting till November, or December for this letter if they knew about it in September?
Board meeting, they had to wait for the board, and the board had to decide, and then they got back to us on the mortgage.
I don't think their issue where it changed, because they were still in that fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm not saying, but why, if they knew in September what they know in December, why didn't this letter come in September? October?
We sent it to them, we also met with them to go over some changes, revise the lease all in draft form, and then they're still asking that they extend their current lease six months and work out those other bugs, bring that lease back to council. The changes were switching rooms.
Okay, but things changed. Why didn't it come back to us to see the changes?
Because it's still in draft form. There's no point in me bringing it back to council when they're still looking at it or you may on their board.
But we haven't heard anything about it. We haven't heard anything at all, and so we're not a part of any of the setup of it.
Because that's, that's, my job is to work with that tenant and provide you the information back after it's informed. If I keep bringing it back to you, change after change after change, you're gonna get frustrated with the amount of changes that I'm bringing back. Let's get it finalized, bring it back to council for your approval.
Well, I think it's important to be kept in a loop along the route. Not necessarily you got to print the whole four, five, six-page lease, but just a bullet, you know, they dropped this room, they picked up this room, or whatever it is they want, just so that, you know, you don't know what's going on.
But this, you just got this on the six, and now we're talking about this. So what's on the table here is, do we extend their current lease to the new fiscal year and then rewrite the lease or approve the lease? Or do we want to do something different than that? We have a motion to approve this in a second. Is there any discussion more about whether or not we want to approve this?
Is it going up by approximately ninety-five hundred dollars, ten thousand, or somewhere around in there, is about how?
Well, they did add space too.
Yeah.
They added another room. And I believe, I believe it was somewhere around two thousand, about twenty-four hundred dollars a month.
Twenty-four, twenty-one point fifty. And I heard that out of these rooms, they wanted to drop a room. Did they drop a room and add a room?
Yes.
So here, they're forty-eight, forty-three square feet. What are they at now? Is it more or less...
They're dropping two, they're dropping two oh one and adding two oh three. That's where they had it all in there, they didn't want to take both rooms after the, with the increase.
But two oh three is already on here, so they're just dropping two oh one.
They're, they're flip-flopping, they're in two oh three now, they want to go into two oh one and free up two oh three.
So is in that effect on square footage about the same, or is one real large?
Pretty much, they're pretty much the same.
That was an issue. I went into the senior center to measure out some rooms, and the three rooms that I did get to measure out, they're being charged approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-three feet more than what their lease says. That's concerning. And I asked to have them re-measured, and that didn't happen. So I, I'm, you know, there's members, you and Anna.
It's been measured.
Well, the last time in the September meeting, when I asked you for the second time, you said you were pretty sure, so I wanted to...
How does this have to do with the motion on the table?
Because it has to do with the amount that they're paying.
They're not paying, you're not voting on that. You're voting on a six-month extension of the current lease, that has nothing to do with the proposed lease. Why do I need to be the one to say that, why?
You're right, I already said it once, we have a motion on the table to extend their lease for six months. Any other discussion on that?
Are there, are there utilities included in this new lease price?
There is no new lease, it's an extension of the current lease.
But they want to extend what you've already proposed to them.
No, no, no.
This is their old thing.
They're in now.
This, this keeps it at the, at the old rate.
I understand, keeps it at the old rate, because they don't want the new one to start in January. If the new one starts in January, are the utilities included in that twenty-four hundred?
I think their intent is to extend the lease in its current form for another six months.
Right. Should I look at the currently paid?
Without, they're not changing any of the terms.
Because they're fiscal, you know, it starts in January.
I understand that, and if we both know, that means all these changes take in effect, so I'm trying to...
You haven't had a vote yet, though.
But I have to vote, so I'm kinda needing to know if it is going to be applied, and if everybody votes no, then, then the January lease that we gave them is gonna go into effect, right?
They haven't signed it, so it would go back to the terms of the original lease. And if the terms of that original lease say it extends...
But yes, their utilities, their utilities are included in it, to answer your question. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Alright, this is the revised lease for tasteful occasions, and I was going to bring this up in executive session, but I was, I did not bring it up in executive session, so I'm gonna bring it up now. Those, tasteful occasions asked us to go out and get comps, and also Erica has been asking for comps, so I tried, I tried to put it together best I could. There's a building called the Wiki Building, it's fully outfitted, fitted with kitchen and dishwashers, and it's, basically, it's a catering school. It's come up for rent, and it's, again, I convert everything to square feet, price per square foot per month. So not, not necessarily a normal way to do it, but just to compare apples to apples, that building is renting for fifty-six cents a square foot now. In addition to the fifty-six cents per square foot rent, you would have to pay utilities, tax, maintenance, and insurance. So that would definitely take it up to a dollar, a dollar plus a square foot. Looking at another one, I talked to a businessman in town, and the rent for just warehouse space is five-fifty per square foot annually. So if you convert that to monthly, it's twelve thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year. Monthly, it's one thousand, fifty-four dollars a month. That includes utilities, but there's no build-out. So, you, in other words, there's no kitchen, there's no dishwasher, there's no fryers, there's nothing. So that comes to out to fifty, forty-five point eight cents a square foot. And the other item was four dollars a square foot annually, which comes out to thirty-three point three cents a square foot, plus utilities for another building. So basically, I guess what my bottom line, what I'm trying to say is a dollar a square foot is reasonable and maybe a little high.
A dollar a square foot for a commercial kitchen?
I'm just telling you what the comps say. The, and, and one other thing, the guy, he said that you could go on LoopNet, Loop.net, and it has other comps for kitchens in the area, but he said that, that's how he sets his prices, and that's what he did with these. That's all I had to say about that. So I think what we should do is go down through here and basically take the main paragraphs one at a time and discuss. So...
We need a motion then? We need to do a motion then?
Yeah.
Make a motion and we approve the lease for tasteful occasions?
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Now we can discuss. So I guess, by way of an introduction, the, we've taken away all the storage closets that they currently have, and we've looked at where the tables and chairs are right now. We've looked at putting up a wall, it would be an eight-foot-high wall with netting above so that balls can't get through. So it'd be open, it wouldn't affect the air, you know, basically, it would be heated by the same heating system, you wouldn't have to run any other ducts or anything. So really, it would just be the cost of putting in a wall, and two walls and a door. And that would give them the three-hundred-and-sixty square feet of storage that they require.
For no charge?
That's the way it is here right now, but that needs to be discussed. Takes them to twenty-two sixty.
Because we were talking about the dollar a square foot, and that increases them what, to twenty-two sixty?
If you use a dollar a square foot, it would?